Okay, good evening tonight. I want to welcome everybody here. We appreciate you being here. Before we get started with our actual meeting tonight, I'm going to ask Councilmember Rick Morick to lead us in an invocation.
Okay, let's pray. Lord, we thank you for another day of life, and we come tonight thankful for this city and for the country that we live in. We pray now for protection of our officers and our fire department and those who serve our city and residents. We also ask that you calm the hearts and minds of the citizens in Baltimore. We pray that you protect the residents and the police officers there. And now this evening, we just pray and ask for guidance and wisdom as we conduct the business of the city. Be with us tonight, and we pray all these things in Jesus' name. Amen.
Thank you, Councilmember Morick. Okay, I'd like to call the regular meeting of the Milton City Council for Monday, April 27th, 2015, to order. Suti, if you'll please call the roll and make any general announcements.
Good evening, Mayor and Council. I'll be happy to call roll for the April 27th, 2015, regular meeting. I would like to remind those in attendance to please silence all cell phones at this time. Those attending the meeting who would like to provide public comment either during the public hearing or during the call for public comment, you are required to complete a public comment card prior to speaking on an item. There is no public comment for consent agenda items or items under first presentation. Those called to speak will be taken in the order that their speaker cards are received by the city clerk prior to the beginning of tonight's meeting. All speakers will identify themselves by name, address, and organization if applicable. The city council may allow public comment on either an agenda item or general public comment from a representative of such an organized group or association, provided that such an individual shall file a notarized affidavit that they have the authority to speak on behalf of said organization on a form provided by the city clerk prior to the agenda item being called. Demonstration of any sort within the chamber is prohibited, so please refrain from any applause, cheering, booing, outbursts, or dialogue with any person speaking. Please show the same respect to the person speaking that you will expect to receive yourself. Anyone in violation will be asked to leave. As I call roll this evening, please confirm your attendance. Mayor Joe Lockwood.
Here.
Councilmember Karen Thurman.
Here.
Councilmember Matt Koots.
Here.
Councilmember Bill Luss.
Here.
Councilmember Bert Hewitt.
Here.
Councilmember Joe Longoria.
Here.
Councilmember Rick Morick.
Here.
Would everyone please rise for the Pledge of Allegiance?
The Pledge of Allegiance, to the flag of the United States of America, and to the Republic for which it stands, one nation, ungod, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Again, welcome to the city of Milton. We appreciate you being here tonight at our city council meeting, and it's also a big honor to have all the students here from Cambridge. So, appreciate you all being here and look forward to giving you guys a proclamation here in a few minutes. If the city clerk could please sound the next item.
Our next item is approval of the meeting agenda. This is Agenda Item Number 15-107.
Okay, I know we had talked about possibly adding an agenda item under new business for appointing a member to the Parks and Recreation Advisory Board for District Post One. So, I'd like to add that. Is there anything else on the agenda?
Mayor, I believe it's on the agenda. Can we move it up?
Or just to move it?
Yeah, just to move it up to...
Right up to consent agenda.
Yeah, right up to consent agenda.
Mayor, if I could offer just in the spirit of a couple of things that we have people here for tonight, if you might be willing to move that item until after the public hearing.
Okay.
Between the public hearing and zoning agenda, Mayor, I'd also ask if the council would consider moving the number two item under new business, which is consideration of the proposal to involve aspects of litigation and peamole versus the city of Milton to that same location prior to the zoning agenda.
Okay. Bert, do you want to make a motion?
I'll make a motion to approve the meeting agenda as noted by our city manager.
Second.
Okay, I have a motion. Councilmember Hewitt, second. Councilmember Morick, all in favor, please say aye.
Aye.
Any opposed? That's unanimous. And Suti, if you'll just keep it on track with that. And then I'll move to public comment. Do we have any general public comment?
We do not have any general public.
Okay, alright. Now, I'm going to move on to the consent agenda. If you would please sound the items on the consent agenda.
First item is approval of the April 13th, 2015, city council regular minutes. This is Agenda Item Number 15-108. Our second and final consent agenda item is approval of the financial statements for the period ending March 2015.
Mayor, I'll move to approve the consent agenda as prepared by staff.
Second.
I have a motion. Councilmember Luss can second. Councilmember Thurman for approval. All in favor, please say aye.
Aye.
Any opposed? That's unanimous. Okay. Let's move on to our reports and presentation, unless it's like I've got the first item.
This is a proclamation recognizing Skills USA state competition winners at Cambridge High School, being presented by Mayor Joe Lockwood.
Okay. This item on our agenda, we have a proclamation for Cambridge High School Skills USA, which was recently named a national model of excellence chapter and won 54 medals at the Georgia Skills USA Leadership and Skills Competitions. So, we are very proud to see that Cambridge High School Skills USA program reached such a high level at state and to soon represent Milton at the national level. I'm going to read this proclamation, and then when I get through, I'll ask you guys to step forward and we will present it to you. Alright, I've got a proclamation recognizing Skills USA state competition winners at Cambridge High School. And whereas Cambridge High School Skills USA won gold as a chapter excellence program and is now recognized as one of the 24 chapters in the nation as a national model of excellence chapter, winning 19 gold medals and 54 total medals at the Georgia Skills USA Leadership and Skills Competitions. And whereas Skills USA Cambridge High School is led by Dr. Tom Washburn and Tim Hart and their outstanding student leadership team consisting of, and as I read these names, I apologize if I don't get anybody's name pronunciation exactly right, but if you work with me, consisting of Amber Sharma, Matt Hughes, Sahana Sabramanian, Tara McMillan, Hayri Pollock, Billy Mulroy, Corey Harrison, Azna Ashfak, I believe, and Kenzie Robinson, including gold medalist Jordan Crosby, Haley Lyakos, Emerson McClung, David Ashkon. Let's see, I believe I read Corey Harrison, KJ Hershey, Matt Pollock, Leo Cadia, and I'm going to try TCH Joffe. I'm sorry if I'm getting any of these names wrong. Grant Mitchell, Blake Jones, Evan Bataglia, Joshua Alderman, Lauren Bromlow, Michael Leonardo, Luke Freiberg, Summer Leibarger, and Wes Washburn. And whereas Skills USA promotes the enhancement of leadership skills by attending leadership training and competitions at the local, state, and national level, as well as improving leadership skills in all students by hosting leadership events at the school level. By participation in such events, this organization is able to fulfill its motto, preparing for leadership in the world of work. And whereas Skills USA at Cambridge High School was well represented with many state competition gold medalists. And whereas Skills USA is a valuable asset to the Cambridge High School and the city of Milton throughout the support of community and charities. And whereas Skills USA prepares students as lifelong learners and highly skilled workers through competitions and study. And whereas Skills USA at Cambridge High School is supported by Skills USA State Director, Ashley Brown, Fulton County Career and Technical Education Coordinator, Yolanda Bell, and Principal, Dr. Ed Spurka. Now therefore, we, the mayor and the city council of the city of Milton hereby dedicate Monday, April 27th, 2015, as Skills USA Gold Medalist Day in the city of Milton, Georgia. And that's given under my hand and the seal of the city of Milton, Georgia, on the 27th day of April 2015. And I got to say, you guys, it's an awesome recognition, and we are proud to have you here in the city of Milton and Cambridge High School, so you make us proud. That being said, if my council will join me and all the students that are being recognized, step up to the front here.
Congratulations.
You guys.
Congratulations.
Thank you.
Congratulations.
You're always a great guy.
Thank you.
You guys are wonderful.
You're the best.
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 Good job, guys.
Yeah, it was a great idea. That was Stacy.
Stacy, can you cut that door? That's good. That makes it much more fun.
I didn't even think about that.
Three guys through there. I was in college.
Okay, and before we get to our next item, I do have one public comment, and I'd like to introduce someone here. We are fortunate tonight to have Kimberly Snotty George, who is going to be our Milton Branch or our Library Director. So, we're proud to have her here tonight. Kimberly?
Thank you for having me here, and it's a pleasure to be up here in Milton as your branch manager. I'm in Johns Creek, Alpharetta area, and it's wonderful to be able to serve a wonderful community. I'm looking forward to opening the branch and providing wonderful services for you all, from the arts to education to wonderful teen center. And we're looking forward to just being here. I grew up in Northern California, a little bit about myself, and Sonoma County, and Milton is as close to it as I get with the horses. There's no wine, no wine and vines, but definitely grew up around a lot of the horses and the barns, so I'm really looking forward to being an asset to you all and being the branch manager in the community. So, I look forward to it, and thank you so much for your time.
Thank you, Kimberly. We're excited. Okay, Suti, if you will please call the next item.
Our next item is an alcohol beverage license application, consideration of issuance of an alcohol beverage license to The Blue Den located at 980 Birmingham Road, number 200, Milton, Georgia 3004. This is Agenda Item Number 15-104. It was administratively deferred at the April 13th regular city council meeting. Ms. Stacy Inglis.
Good evening, Mayor Council. The item before you tonight is an alcohol beverage license to The Blue Den. The Blue Den is located in Birmingham Crossroads, has excellent food, I recommend it. Very nice couple that owns it as well, and they have met all the requirements of the City of Milton ordinance. We recommend approval. I'll be happy to answer any questions.
Okay, is the applicant here tonight?
No, sir.
Okay, all right. Any questions for Stacy? Do we have any public comment?
We do not, sir.
Okay, I'll close the hearing, and if there's no questions, I'll open up for a motion.
Mr. Mayor, on behalf that they do have excellent food, as what Stacy has said, I'd like to make a motion for the issuance of an alcohol beverage license to The Blue Den located at 980 Birmingham Road, number 200, Milton, Georgia 3004, Agenda Item Number 15-104.
Second the motion.
Okay, I have a motion from Councilmember Kuntz, a second from Councilmember Losk for approval. All in favor, please say aye.
Aye.
Any opposed? Okay, that passes unanimous. All right, Suti, if you'll please call the next item.
Our next item is consideration of the issuance of an alcohol beverage license to Wilbur and Rudy's Farm Table LLC located at 850 Hickory Flat Road, Milton, Georgia 3004. This is Agenda Item Number 15-105. It was administratively deferred at the April 13th regular city council meeting. Ms. Stacy Inglis.
This establishment is also located in Birmingham Crossroads, it's right on the corner of Birmingham Road and Birmingham Highway, and I have not had a chance to eat there yet, but I believe they are going to have some sort of a little deli there, and what they are also planning on doing is selling packaged retail wine and malt beverage. They have also met all of the requirements of the ordinance, and staff recommends approval. Be happy to answer any questions.
Okay, do we have any public comment?
I do, sir. I have a public comment from Mr. John Reddick.
Okay.
Good evening, Your Honor, and members of council. Thank you for allowing me to speak with you tonight, and I just wanted to...
Excuse me, sir, if you wouldn't mind just state your name and address for the record.
Yes, sir. John Reddick, 148 Ironmont Road, Canton, Georgia. I'm the first Milton, or the first address over the Milton line. So, this community in Birmingham here, I wanted to just urge you to consider passing of this ordinance, or not ordinance, but issuing the alcohol beverage license. Our community can very much use a social gathering spot, and it's a wonderful, older building that's been very nicely remodeled, and we'd like to suggest that you approve this.
Okay, thank you.
Thank you.
Is there any other public comments?
That's all, sir.
Okay, if not, I will close the hearing. Is there any questions for staff? Again, I'd like to just echo what you guys are, the applicants are here, but what you guys are doing and with the building, and just looking forward, I think it'll be a great addition to the area and the neighborhood. So, it's, you know, it's kind of refreshing to see, you know, somebody taking an old building that's got the character and whatnot, and using it to its full potential. So, anyways, just wish you well in the future as you get opened up, and I'll open up for a motion. Matt?
Yeah, I'll echo those sentiments as well, and they're every, just about every other night, and just glad to see you guys doing what you're doing where you are. So, I would like to approve, make a motion to approve the issuance of an alcohol beverage license to Wilbur and Rudy's Farm Table LLC located at 850 Hickory Flat Road, Milton, Georgia 3004, Agenda Item Number 15-105.
Second.
Okay, I've got a motion for approval from Councilmember Kuntz, a second from Councilmember Thurman. Any discussion? Hearing none, all in favor, please say aye.
Aye.
Any opposed? That passes unanimous.
Thank you.
Okay, thank you, Stacy. Good luck, guys, and where are we on our agenda?
I think we're going to, we moved under approval of agenda the first two new business items, so I'll read out the first one, which is a consideration of a resolution appointing a member to the City of Milton Parks and Recreation Advisory Board for District 1, Post 1. This is Agenda Item Number 15-110, and this goes to Councilmember Karen Thurman.
Thank you. I want to start off by thanking Mark Reed for his service on this board for many years and the leadership he provided as chairman of the board. I know he left the board a lot better off, and the City of Milton and our residents a lot better off than when we started parks-wise. And I'd ask for your approval of recommendation of Van Cottis. Van and his family moved to the City of Milton in 2003, and he's been involved, actively involved in the girls' softball at North Park. He's been involved in athletics, it sounds like most of his life in high school. He lettered in football, basketball, and baseball, and he also played baseball and football in college. He is a member of the Georgia State Bar since 1992, and continues to practice law in Sandy Springs, and he says that he believes that a strong youth organization makes for a strong community, and I very much agree with that. So, I'd ask for your approval of Van for the Parks and Recreation Board.
Okay. Is there any questions, or I'll open up for a motion.
May I make a motion to approve Van Cottis to the Parks and Recreation Advisory Board?
Second the motion.
Okay, I have a motion by Councilmember Kuntz, a second by Councilmember Losk. All in favor, please say aye.
Aye.
Any opposed? That's unanimous, and Van wants to, do we have his paperwork? We'll go ahead and swear at him. I mean swearing that.
I've had people do that, too. Now, I'm going to give your home phone number to everybody.
Oh, great.
Did the mayor not hear that he was...
Raise your right hand, repeat after me. I do solemnly swear and affirm...
I do solemnly swear and affirm...
That I will faithfully perform the duties of...
You know, faithfully perform the duties of the Milton Parks and Recreation Advisory Board. Milton Parks and Recreation Advisory Board.
Of the city.
The city.
And that I will support and defend the charter thereof.
Support, defend, and trust thereof.
As well as the Constitution.
As well as the Constitution.
And the laws of the state of Georgia.
The laws of the state of Georgia.
And of the United States of America.
The laws of the state of Georgia.
All right. Thank you so much. We appreciate all the volunteers and all our committees and whatnot, so it makes a big difference in our community, so thank you, sir.
Thank you. Karen, one last thing.
Uh-huh.
My daughter's godfather, he used to kick for Georgia Tech.
I'm okay.
All right, thank you, ma'am. All right, Suti, if you'll call next item, please.
Our next item under new business is consideration of a proposal to resolve aspects of litigation in the T-Mobile versus City of Milton, Agenda Item Number 15-111, and this is going to be taken by Mr. Kelly Hundley.
Good evening, Mayor, members of council. My name is Kelly Hundley, and I've been serving as your als-council appointed through Germa to handle this litigation with T-Mobile since the case first came in. Just to refresh your memories, this case got started with an application for three different cell towers, one on New Providence Road, one on Mountain Road, one on Hopewell Road. To make a long story short, Mayor and council denied two requests for special use permits for the Hopewell Road and the Mountain Road location, and conditionally approved a request for New Providence Road, authorizing a special use permit for a 110-foot tower along with a stealth design. T-Mobile unhappy with that, filed the lawsuit that we've now been involved in for some time. We've had one claim go up to the Court of Appeals and come back down, and in that instance in favor of the city, affirming that the city, at least in certain aspects of this case so far, the court has looked at it and said, "Y'all did the right thing and didn't violate any law." After the 11th Circuit made its decision, and the district court then found in favor on a different issue for the city, T-Mobile approached us with a potential resolution, or at least a partial resolution of this case, that's up for consideration tonight. The consideration that, the proposal that T-Mobile has presented, first of all, it has several subparts. First of all, with regard to the Mountain Road Tower location, T-Mobile has said that they're going to abandon all their claims with regard to that particular tower and that particular location, so any of their claims regarding Mountain Road would go away completely. With regard to the New Providence Road Tower, as I mentioned, y'all had approved a 100, excuse me, a 110-foot tower with stealth design. They had sought 150 feet roughly tower. They've come back and said that they can live with the tower at 100 feet inclusive of the antenna, or excuse me, if you approved it at 100, they've offered to build a tower at 110 feet. We've said, or at least for y'all's consideration tonight, you would allow a special use permit to issue for a 110-foot tall tower, which actually means you would be giving them only five feet more than what you had originally said they could have, because we're now including the antenna array as part of the height as well, whereas that was not part of what had originally been proposed by T-Mobile. So, Mountain Road goes away, New Providence Road would get the tower, it would be a stealth design, a monopine, as you all had approved conditionally, and it would be no more than 110 feet inclusive of the antenna array. With regard to the Hopewell Road location, T-Mobile originally said that they, as a part of the settlement, they wanted a permit to issue for that, and I have told them that that's not going to happen, that there's going to be a continued fight, there's going to have to be a continued fight over the tower at the Hopewell Road location. T-Mobile nevertheless still wants to proceed with resolving the issues with regard to the two other towers, as I've just explained. They've also agreed to dismiss all their discrimination claims, there's a claim that we were treating them differently from other providers, they've agreed to abandon those claims, they've agreed to abandon all their claims for any attorney's fees or recovery of any costs. So, what we end up, when the smoke all clears, is they've proposed a settlement where essentially all we're going to be fighting about is the Hopewell Road location, only one claim with regard to the Hopewell Road location. The only potential relief that they would get would be the granting of a special use permit, assuming that they can carry their burdens with regard to that claim. I look at this as, from a lawyer's perspective, I look at this as, with regard to those towers that would be the subject of this settlement, it's a clear win for the city, from my perspective as your attorney. You're giving them only five more feet on the New Providence Road Tower than what you told them they could have five years ago. The Mountain Road location, they have decided that they will just throw in the towel on that particular location, and they're throwing in the towel on a lot of other claims. From the perspective of the city or citizens in the city, Mountain Road disappears, New Providence Road is what it is, they don't, nobody has to worry about having to write a check to T-Mobile for anything at all in this case. We'll be fighting over just the Hopewell Road location. So, I consider all of that a victory for the city. We still have a ways to go in dealing with the Hopewell Road location, but this case gets a whole lot easier and simpler to deal with when we're only dealing with one tower, and so I would urge you to approve the settlement that T-Mobile is presenting that we've hammered out with them.
Okay, is there any questions? All right, Karen, and Matt?
I just have one question. The New Providence Road location, that's right where the power easement is anyway, correct?
Yes, ma'am, it is. In fact, it will be sitting in the power easement adjacent to the power line towers.
Okay, Matt?
Oh, no, no, it's...
No, anybody else? Okay.
Mayor, I'll move to...
Open that up, a motion.
I'll move to approve a proposal to resolve aspects of litigation in T-Mobile versus City of Milton, Agenda Item Number 15-111.
Second.
Okay, I have a motion for approval from Councilmember Losk, a second from Councilmember Thurman. Any discussion? Hearing none, all in favor, please say aye.
Aye.
Any opposed? That's unanimous. All right.
Thank you.
Thank you, Kelly. Good job. All right, Suti, if you want to call us on our next item, where we're on the agenda?
We're on the zoning agenda now, and I'll go ahead and read the rules. At the second regularly scheduled meeting of the month, the mayor and city council consider a zoning agenda. These items include rezoning, petitions, modifications of zoning, use permits, and associated concurrent variances, in addition to ordinances, resolutions, and text amendments. I would like to acquaint you with some of the rules and procedures for this meeting. The applicant, and although speaking in support of an application, will be allowed a total of 10 minutes to present the petition. The applicant may choose to save some of the time for rebuttal following the presentation by the opposition. Since the burden of proof is upon the applicant, the applicant will be allowed to make closing remarks, provided time remains with the allotted time. The city clerk will be keeping track of the time and will inform you periodically of the remaining time for your presentation. Those called to speak will be taken in the order that the speaker cards were received by the city clerk prior to the beginning of tonight's meeting. Before beginning your presentation or comment, please identify yourself by name, address, and organization, if applicable. The Planning Commission has heard the rezoning agenda items, and recommendations have been forwarded to the mayor and city council for consideration and disposition. The applicant shall not submit material to the council during this meeting unless requested to do so. When an opponent of a rezoning action has made, within two years immediately preceding the filing of the rezoning action being opposed, campaign contributions aggregating $250 or more to a local government official of the local government, which will consider the application, it shall be the duty of the opponent to file a disclosure with the governing authority of the respective local government at least five days prior to the Planning Commission meeting. A violation of relevant state statute constitutes a misdemeanor. Therefore, if you have contributed $250 or more to a council member, and you have not filed a disclosure prior to the Planning Commission meeting, the city attorney strongly suggests that you have someone else speak for your point of view. Our first zoning item this evening is consideration of RZ 14-15, VC 14-04, 3501 Bethany Bend by Beijan American Properties LP to rezone from AG1 Agricultural and TR Townhouse to TR Townhouse to develop 77 townhomes on 10.17 acres, a six-part concurrent variance to, one, reduce the perimeter side, section 64-669 H2A, two, reduce the perimeter rear setbacks, section 64-669 H3, third, reduce the landscape strip along Bethany Bend, section 64-1090A, four, reduce the 75-foot buffer and 10-foot improvement setback, section 64-1091B, and fifth, allow alleys with only one row of townhomes, section 64-1095H, and sixth, reduce the amount of open space required, section 64-669J1. This is Agenda Item Number 15-090. First presentation was heard April 13th at the regular city council meeting. Ms. Kathy Field.
Thank you. Mr. Mayor, members of the city council, the applicant for RZ 14-15, VC 14-04 requests that these items be withdrawn from consideration. The applicant and his attorney are here, however, to answer any questions you may have.
Okay. Do we have any public comment?
We do not, sir.
Okay, and I'll close the hearing, and then, again, open up. Questions of staff or the applicant of council, anybody? Bill?
Say again, if you would, Kathy, they're seeking to withdraw the items or the entire application?
The entire application.
Okay. Is there any questions on that, or comments? Okay, then I will open up, obviously, different decisions, but right now the applicant has requested that, to remove the application, so certainly can make a motion to accept that, or anything else. Karen?
Mayor, I'll make the motion to accept the applicant's request for withdrawal of Agenda Item Number 15-090.
Second. I have a motion for withdrawal from Councilmember Thurman, a second from Councilmember Kuntz. Any discussion? Hearing none, all in favor, please say aye.
Aye.
Any opposed? That passes unanimous. Thank you. Okay, the city clerk will please call the next item.
Our next item is consideration of U15-01, U15-02, VC 15-01, Hopewell Road, 10.142 acres on the east side of Hopewell Road with frontage of approximately 1,130 feet within the second district, second section, landlot 692 by Georgia Cumberland Association of Seventh Day Adventist to develop a 37,500-square-foot church, 64-1804, within four buildings, with a maximum number of 600 seats, and 13,000-square-foot private school, 64-1831, for pre-K through eighth grade with a maximum 90 students, a concurrent variance to reduce the 75-foot undisturbed buffer and 10-foot improvement setback to a 25-foot undisturbed buffer and 10-foot improvement setback along the east and north property lines as shown on the site plan, 64-1143A3B. This is Agenda Item Number 15-091. First presentation was heard at the April 13th regular city council meeting. Ms. Kathy Field.
Thank you. Mr. Mayor, the applicant for Agenda Item Number 15-091 also is requesting that this item be withdrawn tonight.
Okay. Before our close, do we have any public comment on this item?
We do not, sir.
Okay, I'll close the hearing then, and open up if there's any questions, or I'll open up for a motion.
So, we all accept the, make a motion to accept the withdrawal of Agenda Item Number 15-091.
Second.
Okay, I have a motion for withdrawal from Councilmember Kuntz, a second from Councilmember Hewitt. Any discussion? Hearing none. Job's pretty easy tonight.
I'm telling you.
Hearing none, all in favor, please say aye.
Aye.
Any opposed? That's unanimous. Okay, thank you. All right, Suti, if you'll please call the next item.
Next item is consideration of RZ 15-01, to adopt the corrected City of Milton zoning map as indicated on the geographical information system, GIS, including all zoning actions prior to January 1st, 2015, as shown on current zoning map dated January 2015. This is Agenda Item Number 15-092. First presentation was heard at the April 13th regular city council meeting. Ms. Kathy Field.
Thank you. Mr. Mayor, this agenda item essentially is to ask consideration to have the council adopt a corrected, updated version of the zoning map. We, the Community Development Department tries every year to update and reflect all the zonings of the past year onto the zoning map, and so this is a corrected map, updated, as you will.
Okay, do we have any questions from Kathy on this? Bill?
As of what date is it updated, Kathy?
Robin, can you...
It's updated up through December 31st, 2014, so it doesn't include any actions, but I mean, we've been working on it, as well as, there is one other item. We chose to make it more user-friendly as far as our form-based code. Last year, we changed it from an overlay to actually zoning district, so you'll see that the form-based code, transect zones are also embedded on the map as well. So, we have, we've had problems with people trying to figure out where everything is, so now it's all in one map for their use.
Was that the bulk of the changes?
Um, yes, it was, yeah, I don't...
Any zoning variances that we had last year?
I mean, we had a couple, but it's just to clean up the map and make sure, I do an audit and make sure there wasn't anything else that we missed, so, yep.
Okay, anybody else?
And just for the record, there's no public comment.
Okay, I'm sorry, no public comment, I'll close the hearing, and then again, if there's anything else, if not, I'll open up for a motion on this item.
Make a motion to approve Agenda Item 15-092.
Second.
All right, I've got a motion from Councilmember Hewitt, seconded by Councilmember Thurman. All in favor, please say aye.
Aye.
Any opposed? That's unanimous. Suti, if you'll please call the next item.
Next item is consideration of RZ 15-02, Chapter 64, Article 20, Deerfield Form-Based Code, to amend the standards and increase the geographical area to include areas within the Highway 9 North Visioning Study, Agenda Item Number 15-093. First presentation was heard at the April 13th regular city council meeting and discussed at April 20th city council work session. Ms. Kathy Field.
Thank you. Mr. Mayor, although they will certainly require a separate vote, I would, with your permission, like to discuss both the Deerfield Form-Based Code and the Crab Apple Form-Based Code, and the reason for that is that in both... And the reason for that is that in both codes, there are similar changes, and those changes are essentially minor amendments to the code. After working with these codes for a couple of years, we have found areas for improvement. So when we change one code, since they're fairly similar, it ended up also changing the second code. However, the major change to the Deerfield Code is that we added in the Route 9 North area from Bethany Bend up to Forsyth County, and that was based on the Route 9 North Visioning Study that we completed last year. I would like to note in there that the intent of that amended area, that amended geographic area that is now being proposed to be embedded in Deerfield, we tried to capture the intent of that visioning code as closely as possible so that this zoning ordinance will implement that vision, and I would like to pay particular attention to the five-acre area, which, as you know, was a topic of a special study. And we did direct our consultant, and we have certainly talked with some of the affected stakeholders in the area, and I feel that we have adequately reflected the intent of the criteria of that area for planning as it relates to the visioning study. So having said that, I would like to review with you, we did discuss this at our workshop meeting. You did have us requested files for in one item, and I would also just like to review the Planning Commission items with you because we have embedded those within this proposed code before you tonight, and I just want to review them all with you to make sure that you certainly are in agreement with them. The first one deal, from the Planning Commission, deals with stubout streets, 150 in length or less. We propose that they, that when they shall terminate, a curb designed to be removed when the adjacent site is developed and the street is extended, and that's so that we have a curb on these stubout streets. And staff, that was proposed by the Planning Commission, and staff certainly supports that amendment. Secondly, the Planning Commission, in terms of incorporating the Milton Trail Plan and provide on- or off-street bicycle facilities not specified in the regulating plans may be provided. It goes on to say, "When on-street facilities are provided within new thoroughfares, the width of the thoroughfare shall be increased." Now, that was a recommendation of the Planning Commission, and what they're essentially saying is that on subdivision streets, interior subdivision streets, that there should be a special area designated for bikes, and that will add to the width of the street. And we have been, from a staff perspective, we have been trying to narrow the streets down so we don't have so much roadway. However, it was the wish of the Planning Commission that the street be widened to allow for a bike lane on those interior streets. So we want to bring that to your attention to see what your thoughts were, if indeed you support the Planning Commission's recommendation. Staff does not particularly agree with that. We felt that an interior subdivision street did not need a specially designated bike lane on it. Certainly exterior streets do, but the interior streets, we thought, were quite enough not to need that. But that is an inconsistency that I'd like some guidance in. Certainly, it's been included in this draft, and should you decide that you don't want it, it would have to be removed. Then there was the issue of the requirements, the city Alpharetta along Women's Parkway, as you know, they own the road, so if there is a development on it, along there, and the city of Alpharetta has already set the sidewalk requirements, for instance, we've included language to say that the city of Milton may waive our requirements so that there is a unified pattern. And then, lastly, the issue of required visitor parking may either be provided off-street in a common parking lot, anywhere on the site, or on-street within a 300-foot feet of the intended use, as measured along the direct improved pedestrian route from the door of the building to the parking space. And this was language dealing with on-street parking and parking lots nearby that the Planning Commission asked us to incorporate, and staff did agree with that certainly as well. In terms of our last workshop meeting, the council and mayor asked us to provide alternative wording regarding the screening of the accessory telecommunications structures related to radio and television. Your opinion at that time was that the proposed wording was not feasible, especially if the structure was very tall in height, in that I think the issue was, the original language said something along the fact that the screening, the planning, this was from the Planning Commission's perspective, that the screening should be of equal height to the accessory structures of the radio and television stations, and we thought that that may be unattenable considering the fact that some of these towers can get to be very high. So we did talk to our city arborists, and we did come up with the following language: "That accessory telecommunications structures must be screened from view along any public or private street or residential use by a 100% opaque wall of solid appearance or a visually continuing, continuous opaque evergreen hedge. The type, size, and location of vegetation shall be approved by the city arborists. The type, size, and location of walls should be approved by the community development director." And we thought that that would be adequate language to provide the screening for any potential accessory television or radio structure. So those are the changes that have come up from the Planning Commission and language requested from the city council at the last workshop meeting that I wanted to bring to your attention.
Okay. Do we have any public comment?
We do not, sir.
Okay. I'll close the hearing on this item and open up for questions. Matt?
Just one question, I guess it's more of semantics than anything else, but if there's a typo in this, would that have any effect on the law? And I just wanted to ask because on section 4.6.7, we try to reference five-acre road, but it was called fire-acre road. I just want to make sure that was corrected. I assume that was what we meant.
Yeah. We can pick up that correction.
Gotcha. I didn't, just didn't know. I just saw that.
Thank you for bringing it to our attention.
Yes.
Rick? Kathy, just a question on the five-acre road zone.
Mm-hmm.
Because we're going to have this be part of the Deerfield.
Yes.
Plan, which we've got form-based code. How is, there were a lot of particulars that we put in there, including height restriction, type of building. Is this going to be left out of a TDR receiving site so it can't be altered as far as the density?
Yes.
Okay. So it's not included in that. What about height restrictions? Is that in the document, the agreed-to portion?
Yes, yes. It's very specific for that particular area, yes.
Okay.
Yes, yes. We were very careful to carry everything from the visioning study.
Over to.
Over to here. Exactly, yes.
Okay. Thank you.
Okay. Anybody else? Bill?
Skip back on the screening for radio and TV.
Mm-hmm.
What kind of facilities are we looking at there? Are we talking about dishes or towers or?
Any of the above. I've seen a lot of dishes, but I've also seen some towers, and I think at the last meeting, it was difficult to actually pinpoint how large those would be, and so we tried to at least come up with an adequate screening, but obviously, we're not going to totally screen a facility.
I guess my concern is by allowing opaque fences around there, are we drawing more attention to them than we would if we just allowed vegetation screens?
And that's certainly an option, you know. There is, there are certain types of trees that do provide very dense screening, and we could certainly just limit it to the vegetative screening as opposed to the fencing type of screening, if that's your pleasure.
I believe on what are major thoroughfares, or even in other areas, we've prohibited the installation of opaque fences.
I think Robin wants to say something.
I was going to say, it says "or," I mean, if you want to eliminate the fence, but I suspect that each, if there were ever to be this type of use, that they would need some sort of security fencing around it, whether, whatever type, but we could always screen it in front of the fence as well. But we do say to provide either evergreen screening or the opaque fence, or it could be both. You could cover the fence with the screening, because I'm sure they would need some sort of security.
Well, I'd be in favor of covering up any opaque fencing.
And we can do that.
With vegetation.
I would agree. Anyone else?
Along the street width, so what's our, what's our, what are we talking? Wanted to narrow the streets. What's that cross-section footage-wise?
Saying if you eliminated the bike path, suggested bike path.
Maybe we can get Carter to come and join our conversation.
Off the top of my head. Or what would you think about roughly adding? What would the width be with the proposed bike lanes, three feet more?
They wanted to make the interior streets wider to allow for a bike lane.
Well, normally, a signed bike lane, depending on whether or not you have curb and gutters, is going to be four to five feet on either side. One of the things that we've talked about and are working through with the fire marshal are some of these street width requirements and really what they need within those developments. So I'm not sure that I've seen a marked bike lane in residential areas, but if you wanted to mark them, current standard is going to be four to five feet, depending on whether curb and gutter exists.
So I'm just sure that. So just want to make sure, Kathy, the current plan had it in there and we're?
No.
Okay. The current plan didn't have it in. It was a recommendation by the Planning Commission.
Correct.
And you just want guidance on whether or not we think we want to add it or leave it out?
That is correct.
Okay.
And I think, you know, I think the intent is good, but the offset is, you know, obviously, five-foot wider streets, you know, again, to keep that rural look, you know, even the narrower streets calm traffic and slow down, so, yeah, I don't know that we would necessarily want to, because as Carter said, that, I haven't really seen in a neighborhood a marked bike path. If you had a wider road, maybe there's more room for bikes on there, but, you know, how do you really delineate that, so?
If you keep the asphalt flush with the curb and gutter so that you could ride on both the gutter pan and the road, you can include that in your designated bike lane too.
I'm not sure we need designated bike lanes in.
I think it takes away from the current residential area.
More commercial feel, so, yeah. Let them change the law, let them ride on the sidewalk.
You know, the other option that's out there these days are the share rows where you just mark shared lanes. You may have seen those in some locations. Roswell uses them quite frequently, and it may roll into some further discussion with the fire marshal on his requirements for some of these road widths too as we move forward with the evaluation of these codes.
I like the shared lane better than making all the roads eight to 10 feet wider.
Yep.
So just to clarify again, it's not in the one that is under consideration? Would have to add that if one wanted to.
Let's see, it's, like, did you include, Robin? I mean, it's highlighted in yellow, and we can easily remove that part of it. It's not a big deal at all.
So we would have the request removed?
Yeah, we, yeah. And, but you would have to remove that one.
As part of our motion?
Yes.
Here's, Bill?
Does this include in both of the agenda items?
Yes, they are.
Both Deerfield and?
Yes, correct.
How are we, and I?
Okay. On the Deerfield Agenda Item, okay. I'll open up for a, for a motion. I believe I closed the public hearing on it, so I'll open up for a motion.
There are residents here by Beijen, I guess.
Okay.
Mayor, I'll move to approve RZ 15-02 Chapter 64, Article 20 Deerfield Form-Based Code to amend the standards and increase the geographical area to include areas within the Highway 9 North Visioning Study. As amended to eliminate any reference to adding bike lanes to interior streets and regarding the screening around radio and TV facilities to mandate that both, or if opaque screening is included, that also those opaque fences be screened with vegetation in accordance with the recommendations by the city arborists.
Second.
Okay. All right. We've got a motion with amendments, and those just read by Councilmember Lawson with a second by Councilmember Hewitt. Is there any discussion? All right. Hearing none. All in favor, please say aye.
Aye.
Any opposed? That's unanimous. So who do you feel, please, call the next item?
Next item is consideration of RZ 15-04 Chapter 64, Article 7, Division 5, State Route 9 Overlay District to amend the State Route 9 Overlay District map. Agenda Item Number 15-094. First presentation was at the April 13th regular city council meeting and was discussed at the April 20th city council work session. Ms. Kathy Field.
Thank you. Mr. Mayor and members of the council, now that we have amended the Deerfield Form-Based Code to include that area north of Bethany Bend, we now need to amend the State Route 9 Overlay District map, and so you have in front of you a, an area shown in purple, and essentially, that is what is left of the State Route 9 Overlay District map after we have subtracted out the Route 9 North Form-Based Code.
Okay. Before we get into questions, do we have any public comment?
We do not, sir.
Okay. With no public comment, I'll close the hearing and then open up for questions of Kathy or discussion council. Rick?
Kathy, quick question. Are we actually, what parcels are we adding? Are we, is this mainly just subtracting out what was?
It's subtracting out, yes.
So everything that's on here in purple already was there, but we're just, we're revising to take out the Deerfield Form-Based Code?
Yeah, we're taking, exactly right, but the purple shows what's left. So that's the, that's the new State Route 9 Overlay Zone.
Okay. No changes in comprehensive land use map, no changes in anything else? This is just revised up?
Nothing, it's just a cleanup. It's just a cleanup because we've got two overlying areas and we needed to separate them out.
Okay. Because I think there was some confusion, some people were thinking we were changing the designation of what those parcels could be, but that's not the case.
Not at all.
Okay.
Okay. Anybody else have any questions or comments on this one? Okay. I'll open up for a motion.
Mayor, I move that we approve RZ 15-04 Chapter 64, Article 7, Division 5, State Route 9 Overlay District to amend the State Route 9 Overlay District map. Agenda Item Number 15-094.
Second.
Okay. I have a motion for approval, Councilmember Longoria, second from Councilmember Morick. Any discussion? Hearing none. All in favor, please say aye.
Aye.
Any opposed? That item passes unanimous. So do you?
Next item is consideration of RZ 15-03 Chapter 64, Article 19 Crab Apple Form-Based Code to amend and add standards within the code. Agenda Item Number 15-095. First presentation at the April 13th regular city council meeting and was discussed at April 20th city council work session. Ms. Kathy Field.
Thank you. The same items that I discussed with you via the Planning Commission as well as the item dealing with the radio and television station use standards also apply to this amended code, and the same issues would be. to this amended code, and the same issues would be under discussion. So, if you have any questions.
Okay. Do you have any public comment on?
We do not, sir.
All right, I'll close the public hearing. Again, all right, does council have any questions for Kathy on this? Or Matt, Karen, did you?
Well, basically, we have to, if we want things in Deerfield and Crab Apple to be exactly the same, we'd have to make the same exact motion for this one as we did for the last one.
That is correct, sir. Can I make?
Bill.
Oh, wait a minute.
If you remember.
Actually, I actually need to make a correction. Robin is...
Actually, in the Crab Apple, there, we do not allow the radio stations, so you don't have to say anything about the radio.
Oh, man.
Make your motion a little shorter.
Okay. Mr. Mayor, I'll move to approve RZ 15-03, Chapter 64, Article 19, Crab Apple Form-Based Code to amend and add standards within the code with the following amendment. There shall be no bike lanes required on interior streets.
Second. Okay. Have Councilmember, a motion for Councilmember Lusk, I believe, or Councilmember Hewitt as a second, and then Councilmember, Hewitt's a third millisecond, so I'll give that to Hewitt. So, any discussion? Hearing none. All in favor, please say aye.
Aye.
Any opposed? That's unanimous. All right, Sudi, if you'll call the next item?
The next item is consideration of RZ 15-05, Chapter 64, Article 17, Development Standards, to create standards and penalties for the request of demolition permits within the City of Milton. Agenda item number 15-096. First presentation was at the April 13th regular city council meeting, and was discussed at the April 20th city council work session. Ms. Kathy Field.
Yes, thank you. Mr. Mayor, both the Planning Commission and the DRB asked the staff to create criteria in which the DRB can evaluate all proposed buildings applying for a demolition permit. The proposed criteria are similar to the criteria for evaluating demolition applications for historically designated structures. We did discuss this at the workshop, and there was a request from Councilmember Morick that we do provide you all with a copy of the listing of the Georgia's Natural Archaeological and Historic Resources GIS system as it relates to the inventory of historic structures within the city. And we are having that inventory updated. We, there are over 100 structures on that list, and it is being evaluated, and you will have a report. Unfortunately, it will take longer than a week to do that, but it is underway, and I just did want you to know that, that we're evaluating, number one, is the structure still there, and secondly, what condition is it in? Is it still in good condition, or is it in poor structural condition? Those were my instructions. So, that is being done.
Thank you.
Okay, everybody clear on that? All right, Bill?
Who's going to make the decision on whether it's structurally sound?
Well, at this point, I have one of our code enforcement officers out there looking at it, and then he will come back with a preliminary inventory, and then we will certainly follow up. I'll send out the city architect to follow up on those that he's flagged to, because he clearly isn't a building official, although as a code enforcement, he certainly sees a lot of poorly structured buildings, shall we say. So, but he'll make the first round through and give us an inventory analysis, and then I will send out the city architect to, or else one of our building officials to review that as a follow.
Okay. Any other questions or comments on that? I think Sudi had closed the hearing, didn't he?
I do have public comments.
Okay, then, good that I, all right, if, public comment, please?
And that would be from Mr. Martin Littleton in support.
Hi, I'm Marty Littleton. I live at 13215 Freemanville Road, and I serve on the Design Review Board. I'd ask that the council and the members of council, the mayor and council would find in favor of this because of the last...
Can I, excuse me one second, Marty, do you, do you mind clarifying if you, you mentioned on the Design Review Board, but to clarify, are you speaking personally or on the behalf of the board?
On behalf of the board.
Okay.
On behalf of the board, we, we obviously sit up and we listen to a lot of the presentations for these demolition that come up before us with not having any ability to either deny someone that right, or have much to say, other than just go through the motion. I will tell you that most of the buildings that we do see, quite frankly, from the pictures of the buildings themselves, it's pretty clear indication as to the condition of the buildings. I've had many builders at times ask why they're in front of us at all, and that they really don't need our approval one way or the other, to whether they're going to tear the building down, as well as people that have come to us after the fact, if they've already driven a bulldozer through the building. Some of the things that we've asked for in our Design Review Board notes, if you will, was, for example, I won't name the structure, but we had a structure one time that I went to see that was just a rubble of dirt that was laid out there, left on our city street, versus it being cleaned up and grassed, which is something we asked for. So, I'd ask for you to please allow us to have teeth into supporting or not supporting the demolition of structures, because we do take the time to look at each one and acknowledge whether it's historic in nature or has any significance to our city whatsoever. Thank you.
Okay, thank you. Do we have any other comment?
That's all, sir.
Okay. I'll close the public hearing, and then Councilmember Lusk has a question or comment.
Kathy, I think we talked in work session two, when you're doing this survey, updating this survey, are we going to make people aware of the fact that they are, that they do own or manage historic structures?
We certainly can do that, sir. If that's your wish, we can certainly send out a notice, or, you know, we've also talked about putting plaques on these, some type of identifying plaque. So, perhaps that's step two, once we have a good inventory that we feel comfortable with, maybe that's something I can bring back to the council for future discussion in terms of how we want to make the public, as well as the landowners, aware of really, you know, the value of what they have.
I'm wondering if part of this process, when developers or owners come in and they make that statement that they can tear it down if they want to without any approval, that, wondering if they are really aware of the fact that they have been designated having some historic significance, and that they are on a list, and just wondering if they've been properly notified by us that their structures are, or have some historic value.
To date, they have not, sir.
It seemed like an important part of the whole process.
I struggle with this one a little bit, just, you know, obviously, we have buildings that we'd like to preserve, but at the same time, I think we have to look at the property rights of the owners that actually owe them. And I, you know, I look at this, and I think of historic value, but we call it historic value without justly compensating the owner of the property. And it just, you know, I just have a little bit of a tough time voting for this. That tells the city we can put a whole bunch of historical designations on buildings, and I know as much as we want to preserve them, I'm not so sure this may be the best way. You know, from an incentive standpoint, I'd rather seize maybe some kind of compensation by the city if we were going to come in with legislation that will tell a property owner that they can or cannot do something with a building that may or may not have any actual value to them as a property owner. I don't know, it's just something that I'm sitting on the fence with, and I'm only letting you guys know that I do struggle with this one a little bit.
Would just, would you kind of call this more of a process to go, not necessarily saying that we're going to legislate and not allow a property owner to, you know, do something on his property, but more of a process just to make sure that rampantly folks aren't just tearing things down? Kind of, would you consider, you know, not, it is a process they have to go through, but not necessarily a dead-end process where the majority, you know, obviously, they'd have a legitimate reason to demo a building, and, you know, unless the city found, or the board found some very, you know, remarkable reasons to require them to keep it, or ask them to keep it, however you want to word that. Would that be a safe way to explain this, or to Matt's point?
Well, yeah, well, we have put, we have given authority to the DRB based on this ordinance for them to say A and A with a set of criteria that they would use to make that judgment. Now, of course, their decision is always appealable to you as the next appealable body, but there is authority given to them, to the DRB, in terms of approving or disapproving through this ordinance.
Yeah, and I guess to Matt's point, I can totally agree and see that perspective, but, you know, also see some kind of checks and balances system, too, just like any other permits or building or something, et cetera. You know, again, I guess, you know, with an appeal process, I would feel more comfortable, because I certainly wouldn't want the city to, you know, just, if somebody had a structure on there and needed it to come down for a use of their land, and it was, you know, not of any historic value, which I agree to Councilmember Kutz's, it's hard to, you know, historic value is different in different people's perspective. But, again, as long as there's an appeal process and that we could revisit this, if it were, you know, getting to where it really seemed owners on, property owners, I could kind of get there. But, Bill and Rick?
I'm certainly in favor of preserving historic structures and sites. Certainly, Savannah and Charleston, St. Augustine, and other jurisdictions have designated historic significance on different structures, so there's got to be some legal standing there. And I'm wondering how our code here, or how our ordinance here compares with jurisdictions like that, and can we really defend our code or our ordinance here if it doesn't have the same strength that some of the well-known historic jurisdictions have?
Well, the cities that you mentioned, they protect their buildings through their historic district commission, which, and they get their enabling legislation, of course, from the state to do that, for their authority. And in order to have an HPC, we view demolition permits, it first has to be designated as a local historic structure. Now, in the City of Milton, we only have two designated local historic structures that would be under the purview of the HPC for demolition permits, and those two are the Thomas Birdhouse and the Chadwick Store. But, and so, therefore, aside from those two, there is nothing else, there is no other body in the city that reviews demolition permits. And since the DRB was already performing courtesy reviews, we felt that that would be an appropriate responsibility for the DRB to take on. But the HPC can only do it if it's a locally, historically, a local, a local historic structure, and it has to be so designated by the HPC to do that. And that's how they can, therefore, review and approve demolition permits.
Well, from what I know right now, the chance of any other structures in the city being designated historic is probably slim to none.
Next on the next 50 years.
Councilmember, that's a fair statement, and part of the reason that's a fair statement is because the council, at this point, only has two members appointed to the HPC. So, you know, I either need the council to appoint more members so that we can have a quorum of the bodies so that they can actually meet, or we need to figure out if this is a matter that's of importance to the level that we would give this power and authority to a different board who's already reviewing these permits as well. So, that is a true statement. There will not be anything designated as historic, because right now, we don't have a commission sufficient that I can even ask them to meet.
Rick, I think.
Yeah. Kathy, appreciate your comment as far as updating of the inventory, and I guess I want to echo what Bill said, too, as far as landowner notification. I think that, that's got to go hand in hand. Once we identify what we have out there that we think are historic buildings or structures, we need to let the current property owner know and be aware that we've designated, or we view this as historic otherwise. To Marty's comment, people may just tear it down, because they may not even be aware that it's on a list, and then later come forward for forgiveness. I just think that's, would be maybe the next step that we need to do.
Sure, okay.
Once we compile that inventory.
We can do that, sir.
I think that would be helpful. Karen?
I'm a big proponent of incentivizing people to act in the behavior you want, rather than forcing them to do so. So, I would like to see us try to look up a way that if people are willing to have their properties be historic properties, that they would forego their right to demolish them for a certain period of time, and maybe get some tax incentive from the city for being willing to designate their property. And the city would obviously have to accept it, because it'd have to be something that we feel like we wanted to, was worth saving, but to give them some kind of tax break for doing so. And then, and by giving them the tax break, they forego their right to have the property, ever, to have the property demolished for a period of 20 years or whatever.
Makes sense. Anybody else? So, do we want to continue discussion on this and get some more information, or somebody want to make a motion?
A question, can we, in fact, approve this, because we already have the process in place, but then bring it up as another item that we really discussed, some of the things that Karen had mentioned and Bill had mentioned? Or is it, is it made, I guess, looking at protocol, is it better that we just hold off on everything till we can do what we want to do with it?
You know, to give the council some idea of what's coming up, we're going to have to slug through this Historic Preservation Commission item. Whether we want to or we don't, we're going to have to slug through it and figure out what we do, because a commission that's appointed that has two members, we might as well dissolve, because they can accomplish just as much as a committee that doesn't exist. So, I'll let, you know, this is going to come forward as an agenda item on the work session next month. This is that period of the year where we meet six consecutive weeks in a row. So, you know, we'll, it's only two weeks from now that we'll be having that discussion as to what the council would like to direct me to do with that. I can't appoint members to it, so I need some help figuring out how we, how we get it to a good place, so that it can take some of the slack and do exactly some of the things that are being recommended here tonight. I think that was always the vision of the HPC, was to be doing some of those things. We need to get them in a position that they can be successful. I don't know if that's going to impact your vote tonight or not, or if you choose to move forward tonight or not, but just know that discussion is coming up within the next 14 days.
I personally think it's better to get things ironed out and finalized, rather than to just pass something, and then with the thought of changing it, and I think, you know, maybe this will force our hand a little bit to get this, because I just hate to pass something now that is going to be so gray, you know, if we don't really have some, a body that, you know, or properties that can be designated historic or not. I just, I feel like, you know, till we get something like that done, I'm in favor of maybe deferring this, but.
Kathy, how quickly you think you'd... Kathy, how quickly you think you'd have that inventory ready for us to review? Would it be by the work session?
That was my directive, so I said mid-May, and so I think the timing could work perfectly.
Bill?
So I think what I'm reading from the council, if you want to just, I'm not leading you to a place of making a motion, but if you wanted to, the deferral of this would be until May the 18th.
Okay. Anybody want to make a motion for deferral?
I'll do that. Find the item. I'll move to defer item RZ 15-05, Chapter 64, Article 17, Development Standards to Create Standards and Penalties for the Request of Demolition Permits Within the City of Milton. Agenda item number 15-096 to the May 18th regular city council meeting.
Okay, I've got a motion for deferral from Councilmember Lusk for, was it 18th, from May 18th?
Eighteen.
And a second from Councilmember Kuntz. Any discussion? Hearing none, all in favor, please say aye.
Aye.
Any opposed? That's unanimous. All right, city, if you please call the next item.
Our next item is consideration of RZ 15-06, Chapter 64-1609, Swimming Pool Private to Amend Standards for Neighborhood Swimming Pools. Agenda item number 15097. First presentation was at the April 13th regular city council meeting and discussed at April 20th city council work session. Ms. Kathy Field.
Yes, thank you. We did discuss this, as Suti mentioned, at our work session. This is a request to reduce the location of pools, pool equipment and decks from all adjoining interior property lines for neighborhood swimming pools. All of the requests for reduction of 100 feet have been granted by the BZA. And let me just clarify the 100 feet. And when we look for the reduction of the setback, it's, the 100 feet would start from the end of the pool to the required buffer requirements. So it's really 100 feet plus on the sides, there's another 25-foot buffer to the actual lot line, and in the rear it's 50, so that it's 150 to the rear and 125 each to the side. And the idea was to reduce that 100 feet to a lower amount. And so what we did as a compromise is that we're suggesting that it'd be 50 feet from the end of the pool to a setback, and the setback would include a 25-foot undisturbed buffer and a 10-foot setback. So that's 35 feet. So we're talking 50 to these setbacks, which entail 35 more feet, and that would be on all sides. So it's a reduction of 125 and 150 to the rear to 85 around the whole pool, and that is what we're proposing. And in addition, there was the issue of the location of the community pool areas, and it was recommended at the work session that the community pool areas be visible from internal subdivision streets and not necessarily place the pool in the back of the subdivision. In addition, it was agreed it was important to screen the pool from the exterior streets to preserve the rural view shed. And so therefore, the proposed changes are highlighted in yellow on your draft in front of you. Oh, I'm sorry, yes, thank you very much. I'm reminded about the planning commission's recommendation, and at their, the planning commission's March 25th meeting, it was recommended the proposed amendments not be approved and therefore remain the same. This was based on their opinion that the 100-foot setback should be preserved to protect the adjacent property owners from noise, light, and general activity related to a neighborhood swimming pool. In addition, the planning commission believed that placing neighborhood swimming pools within the subdivision contributes to more crime and vandalism of the amenity area since it would not be visible to the general public.
Okay.
So you have the proposed changes from the workshop are shown in yellow, and the modifications that are being proposed tonight are in red. We did find one era, and that is in Section 2B. It talks about pools, pool equipment and decks must be located at least, we're proposing 50 feet from all adjoining interior property lines, and at least we're proposing 50 feet from all property lines which abut single-family uses. Now, we're using 50 feet, we originally, there was 100 in there, and we think we heard 50 feet. There was a discussion at the 50-foot level, so we did put that in, but that certainly is open for discussion. This paragraph goes on to say, "In addition, pools, pool equipment and decks shall comply with all setback requirements with respect to rights of way." And it should also say, "With respect to rights of way and buffers based on the district in which the property is located." So we, those words "and buffers" should be added, so. Other than that, we are certainly open to questions. And I hope I haven't totally confused everyone, but.
Okay, Matt?
So Kathy, when we're talking moving the pools to the interior of the subdivision.
Yes.
How far in is interior?
Interior, is it not exterior?
Well, that's what I mean. Is it like one lot removed or is it 10 lots removed from the entrance to the street? Because obviously, you know, I know, you know, why the planning commission said what they did about not wanting it moved to the interior because of the risk of vandalism on an interior pool, which my subdivision has seen every year, just about. And so I understand where that's coming from, but I just didn't know if we were to move it on the interior, you know, maybe we can have a screening if it was exterior of some way. I was just thinking of that. So how interior is interior?
Yeah, well, I think we discussed that a little at the workshop meeting. You know, the intent of the planning commission was clearly that they didn't want it on the street, that they felt that that was not a good use of the rural view shed, whatever. And so we did talk about the fact of having it visible from internal subdivision streets and not necessarily place the pool in the back of the subdivision, but we didn't actually say where, no one has really defined how interior is interior, aside from saying that it should be visible from the side street and somehow screened from the front. I think about it as about as far as we got in terms of talking about location.
Karen?
So it could actually be on an exterior street as long as it's screened from that exterior street, as long as the entrance to it was interior to the subdivision?
Well, that is sort of what precipitated the conversation with the planning commission is because we do have an example of that, and I didn't think there was enough screening from the road. And their response was to push it further inward to, so as that the screening would not be an issue. As well as the rural view shed issue, they felt that it was something that probably didn't belong in the rural view shed.
I hate to jump in, but I understand what councilmember was asking there, and I think the way I heard, what I've heard and the way I've heard the desire of the ordinance to be that is so long as the pool is accessible from an interior street and screened from the exterior street, that, you know, that might not have met the pure spirit of what the planning commission was recommending, but I believe that that would be, that that would comply with what was, has been said, I guess.
So it has to have the 25-foot undisturbed buffer and 10-foot improvement setback along the exterior streets?
Well, not. I know we exclude that buffer from the interior streets, I guess we could.
So it automatically, if it's not excluded from the exterior street, then it would automatically have to be required on the exterior street? Right?
Well, it's from adjacent property, so I guess that's a technical question if a right-of-way is a adjacent property of the, you know.
Because I mean, I think it needs to be, I think that it needs to include the exterior streets. I know we exclude the interior streets, but I want to make sure that's not excluding the exterior streets because that's part of our goal is to screen it from the exterior streets.
I guess we could say, provide adequate screening from adjacent properties come and exterior streets, but excluding interior.
Is there a way we can say that we would want to keep the 100 feet, you know, on an exterior street, but only make the 25?
I was going to bring that up. The whole reason we're here even talking about this is because we've had six requests, and the last six have requested variances to this particular code, and they've all six been granted. So that was kind of a sign to us to say you might want to look at, if truly your standard is having to be, sought to be varied every time it's applied, that would indicate that there might be a problem with the code. There is no harm, in fact, in leaving the code written the way it was written. We were trying to anticipate a fix to a, to what was starting to appear as a trend. If you'd like to continue to have it be 100 or 50 or 75, or just not change it at all, there's not anything that's really driving this change other than our perceived trend based upon the current Board of Zoning Appeals' recent actions. So I throw that out there just to say that there's not a burning issue we're trying to solve by bringing this forward, other than just trying to always make the code better than it was yesterday.
To that point, you know, it, again, by doing nothing, if it can't come back for, to the BZA, if you guys want to think about it more, tweak it, we can defer it, or we can make a decision tonight. Matt?
I'm okay with declining this, just to see what happens. If they continue to come with these same requests and like the BZA make their recommendations, you know, we can look at it in the future, but I'm not so sure it's something that has to be done. I could be wrong, I'm just thinking that.
So Kathy, Chris, I mean, we came up, we reduced the buffers buffer, is what I'm going to call it, because, I mean, we got a buffer area already, and then this is actually a setback from the buffer area, right? Where'd we, how'd we come up with reducing it to 50 feet or whatever it is?
Well, that's, we weren't sure from the discussion at the workshop, but I think we talked about 50, but we were trying to get a number that you were, you're satisfying with.
My point was going to be, we've given a variance on this six times, apparently. If we rewrote the setback to be 50 feet, would those six variances have been necessary? Or would we still have had to give them variance? Because my argument is going to be, I'm a little worried 50 feet's not enough.
Yeah, from what Angela, who deals with the Board of Zoning Appeals, when we asked her that question, she said many a times it could be reduced all the way down to 25 feet. I mean, it doesn't mean that the 50 feet would accommodate all the requests, but it tends to be a trend of going very, very narrowly. Now, I think also you would, the council would ask about input from other jurisdictions. The city of Alpharetta only requires a community pool to be the setbacks of the district. So let's say if you had AG1, it would only have to be 25 sides and 50 rear, and so that's how they work, and then Johns Creek and Sandy Springs still remain with this 100 feet.
Right, and the reason I'm asking the question is, at Cricket Creek, when we redid the amenities, the pool came into question. All subdivisions have community pools so that they can have swim teams, which means that the pool needs to be an Olympic-sized pool. And to put an Olympic-sized pool based on the way that current setbacks and buffers are required, I mean, it's a big space. I mean, you don't have room to do much else other than put the pool in. And so I just think that, and even with dropping it down to 50 feet, it's still going to be almost, well, it's more than twice the size, the width of the pool, because the width of the pool, or the long way of the pool's 150 feet, and you have to have 345 feet, you know, total in order to get that 150 in there, and that seems a little bit strange.
Do you know, most of these variances, these six or seven, have they been existing neighborhoods or new neighborhoods?
They've been newly, new neighborhoods.
I think we kind of touched on it, I think it was Karen last week, was if you're going into something new and you picked the house next door to the pool, you know, there's a little more, a little less weight to that than inserting the pool in an existing neighborhood. That's just something to think about there as well.
Karen?
I still like the idea though of them being screened from our exterior streets, so maybe we need the 50 feet plus the screening from the exterior streets and loosen it up some on the interior streets. But I really do believe that it needs to be, you know, I mean, if what we're trying to do is preserve the rural view sheds, then we need to make this so that it goes along with it, and hopefully the BZA will understand why we have done the law the way we have and will adhere to it, so.
Are you saying, require the buffer on the exterior street side?
Right.
And not require if the rest of the sides are interior streets?
And maybe let the interior ones be less.
Less.
But required on the exterior street to protect what we're trying to protect. And make, and have it be, you know, part of it needs to be an undisturbed buffer so they just don't put the parking lot between the pool and the, and the streets, which goes against what you're trying to do.
Go ahead, Rick.
I think that's part of when we were, when we had the work session, that was one of the things we were talking about, because we're looking at conservation subdivision, a number of different things. How do we preserve the rural view shed, not our current definition of rural view shed? What do we do? Putting it right on top of the street may have worked in the past, but for new development, that's not what we want to see, I think, from a city standpoint.
Well, if the council would like, we could certainly be willing to take this back and work on something that deals more with the setback as it relates to the exterior street, if that's, if that's the route that you'd like to go to make those modifications as opposed to worrying about the setbacks surrounding the pool. I think from what I'm hearing, you're really looking at, you're concerned about the setback at the exterior street, which is something that we can certainly address, if that's...
Rick?
And maybe along with that, I think listening to Joe's comment and looking at if someone puts an Olympic-sized pool and it's a new subdivision, people are going to know that they're going to move in. I still think we want to define what the different setbacks are so we get to more of a standard that we don't have the BZA making exceptions every time someone wants to put in a community pool. Our ordinance should be an ordinance that we believe in, and we don't keep making variances every time someone, you know, wants to build. It should be through hardship if we're going to allow variance. That's my, at least my input.
And then along the lines of the setback and/or buffer, disturbed or undisturbed along the exterior street, I think we want to probably look at it as being more of an undisturbed buffer where you're not seeing a planted buffer to help shield the pool versus natural.
And would you have any sense of how much of that undisturbed buffer you would like to see for the pool?
Did you say, do I have?
Yeah, I mean, is there, I mean, I'm just trying to get a sense of something.
I don't, but I would want to make it where it's not a rural of Leland's, you know, and that's blocked, because that kind of goes away from the rural view shed.
Counsel, if you'll allow me to interject, I think with where the discussion's gone, what I'll ask you to do tonight is just to deny this item, and let us bring it back. What you've moved to is something totally different than what we advertised. We advertised adjacency to existing structures, and now we're into buffers. So I'm not, because timing is not of the essence, I'd like to perfect our process, and therefore I'd like to bring this back forward with a re-appropriate advertising on the front end, so that when you all get to making a decision, that because it is a text amendment to the zoning code, it's been made with the right vetting all the way through the council's action.
Anybody want to?
Yeah, Mayor, I move that we deny RZ 15-06, Agenda Item Number 15-097.
Second.
Okay, motion for denial from Councilmember Logoria, second by Councilmember Morag. Any discussion? Hearing none, please say aye.
Aye.
Any opposed? That's unanimous. And I want to make sure, did we have any public comment on that?
We did not.
And I make sure I close the hearing before we vote. And I'll make sure I close the hearing before we vote. Okay. All right, Sudi, if you will call the next item.
Next item is consideration of RZ 15-07, Chapter 64, Article 6, Division 2, AG1, District 2, amend the permitted uses to include equine garment fabrication, Agenda Item Number 15-098. First presentation was at the April 13th regular city council meeting, and was discussed at the April 20th City Council Work Session. Ms. Kathy Field.
Thank you. Mr. Mayor, with your concurrence, I would like to talk about the next three zoning items, RZ 15-07, RZ 15-08, and RZ 15-09, as a group. They all really apply to the issue of the equine use. Let's see, RZ 15-07 is a text amendment to amend the permitted uses allowed, so that it would include the equine garment fabrication and associated development standards. Staff has also included equine garment fabrication within the approved uses in the AG1 district, included a maximum size of 2,000 square feet for the building utilized for fabrication. Therefore, we are proposing to allow this use by right in the AG1 zone, but with a limit of 2,000 square feet. In addition, RZ 15-08 is a text amendment to delete the equine garment fabrication use permit. If RZ 15-07 is approved, where it's a use allowed by right, there is then no need to have a use permit related to equine garment fabrication. And this, RZ 15-08 proposes to delete that use permit. RZ 15-09 is a text amendment under definitions, to create a definition for equine garment fabrication. Currently, there is not a definition, therefore, staff has included a new definition for it. And with that, I'm prepared to take any questions.
Karen?
My only question is, if this would allow, be allowed by right for 2,000 square foot, what would happen if somebody wanted a 3,000 square foot facility, and there was no use permit for it? Do we need to keep the use permit for something that's above the 2,000 square feet, if anyone ever needed it?
Robin, do you want to respond to that?
No, I guess one could ask for a variance to that requirement.
So, they would have to ask for a variance?
And that would go to the Board of Zoning Appeals. Or you could keep the use, I guess that's a good point, you could keep the use permit, I guess.
And then it would come to us, and the use permit would just be for structures greater than 2,000 square feet.
That's correct. We may have to tweak some language to refer to that.
And that's kind of my question. Obviously, you have some barns that may be very large, but their actual area for retail space might be less than 2,000 square feet within the barn. Therefore, I'm wondering, is the 2,000 square feet related only to the retail aspect of it, or the entire structure in and of itself?
We have it so it's for the entire structure. Says, provided buildings do not exceed 2,000 square feet in size, and outside storage shall comply with another section, so.
Sounds like we may need to keep the use permit and just tweak it, then.
I mean, I think most of these people would be selling, if they had it, out of their barns, and those barns are far larger than 2,000 square feet, for the most part. I'm thinking of riding arenas and things like that. I'm just wondering if the 2,000 square feet might be more appropriate as an interior floor space?
I think it should remain 2,000 square feet overall, so we can, so we can keep a good control over it, the overall structure, 2,000, to Karen's point, if we have the use permit for stuff that's above that, or just still there, if it doesn't meet the 2,000, at least it comes to the council in the full process for a use permit.
Bill?
Remind me now, a discussion that we had during our work session, what generated this whole issue? I haven't seen from our economic development department that there's been a flurry of applications for this business.
You're right, and this is one that, you know, one of the things we get to do sometimes in our line of work is find those stories that all of a sudden unfold, and you really go, gosh, how can we be in the problem-solving business versus the, versus the other business? And I'll draw your attention to, and I, an event that occurred in North Milton with a very well-established and well-loved community member who had been operating as a tack builder for years and years and years, who had a very tragic fire at his location. As he came back in to start and do again what he had been doing in this community for decades, we recognized that probably back in about 1964, he should have pursued some type of a rezoning request with Fulton County, and never did. We were not going to be able to issue business licenses to reopen this tack store that had existed for some time, unless we worked at figuring out what a solution might be to allow that type of a use, because it is consistent with Milton's mission and vision, to allow that type of use to be acceptable, which is why we put some pretty strenuous controls on this particular, on what we brought forward by way of square footage. You know, those buildings are being built, rebuilt now after the fire in the property. Now, they're being rebuilt as accessory structures, which are totally permitted within the code. If the council were to find that they didn't believe that equine garment fabrication was appropriated in a community like Milton at this level of magnitude, and denied these things, then those buildings would continue to have been built as accessory structures, and that store would not receive business licenses to open back up. I think that the vision of the council, the direction of the council, and the direction of the community, and the outpouring of support that came for that particular business after the tragedy that it suffered, caused us to say, let's be problem solvers, and let's look at what it takes to put this type of a use, an appropriate use, into the community of Milton, whether it happens just this one time, or other times, these seem to be the types of businesses that we would want out there in the community. That's what started these three items.
I'm fully aware of that incident out there, and I certainly support his reconstruction of his facility and his business out there. And I agree, it is compatible with our vision or mission statement out there, too. I don't see a flurry of applications for this type of use. I think it's fully appropriate to cover it here and allow that use in our code. I don't think it's, I don't think we're gonna be overwhelmed with these types of facilities out here, so I don't see any problem with what you've drafted here in these three ordinances. Codes.
Anybody else?
Yeah, I think that this is a great first step. Obviously, we have a questioning community in our area that we want to preserve and protect, in my mind, and we'd love to see them doing anything they can to be able to promote that, as far as the selling of their saddles and halters, and all of that. I do, though, think that what will happen is that hopefully we'll get some more people in our community that would sell it, but unfortunately, I think they'll be selling it out of a barn with less retail space than the gentleman at Burt Loses' deal, but those people still have to come in for a use permit, because the barn structure in and of itself is gonna be more of a corral, and will be larger than what the 2,000 square feet is. So, I do think that will happen, but this is a great first step, and I would hope we pass it.
Karen?
If we just denied the use permit, the deletion of the use permit, so the use permit was still there, if people didn't get something by right, then they could just go through with the use permit, and if they wanted to have it in their barn, they would just come and get a use permit, as they always have?
Yes, we would probably have to amend the current use permit to create some criteria for larger buildings, for you to make a judgment on, but that would-
So, we could go ahead and do the first and the third, and just defer the middle one until we could-
If you so wish.
Okay. Let me ask real quick, Sudi, to make sure, do we have any public comment?
We do not.
Okay, I'll close the hearing, before we continue on. Okay. Anybody else? Joe?
Oh, I was gonna make a motion.
Are we ready?
We're ready.
Okay, Joe?
Okay, I move that we approve RZ 15-07, Chapter 64, Article 6, Division 2, AG1, District, to amend the permitted uses to include equine garment fabrication, Agenda Item 15-9098.
Second. Okay, I have a motion from Councilmember Longoria, for approval, with a second from Councilmember Hewitt. All in favor, please say aye.
Aye.
Any opposed? That's unanimous. Okay, Sudi, if you want to call the next item?
Next item is consideration of RZ 15-08, Section 64-1811, to delete the equine garment fabrication use permit. Agenda Item Number 15-099, first presentation was heard at April 13th regular city council meeting, and discussed at April 20th City Council Work Session. Ms. Kathy Field.
Mayor?
Joe?
I move that we defer-
Hold on one second. If Kathy doesn't want to make, I'll need to ask, just make sure we don't have any public comment.
There's no public comment.
Okay, let me close, I'll close the hearing, and then, now, I can open up, there's no other, I think we heard there's a motion possibly coming out, so does anybody else have anything they want to say? Or, go ahead, Joe.
I'll just reiterate my earlier point to people in, like, Shenondale Farms, for example, or, you know, Jeff Runner's barn, for that matter, they would need to have a use permit on this, but their space to be able to sell to retail outlet, if they were within the barn, would be less than the 2,000 square feet. And that was just the point I wanted to make. So, but anyway, go ahead.
In making your motion, can you make it like 60 days? I won't be here.
Oh, I was gonna say, to a future date to be determined by staff, but-
I think we have to, I think we defer, we have to have a date to defer to, don't we?
Let's go June the 15th.
June the 15th.
Yeah, we'll rein it in there.
Okay, all right, a motion?
So, Mayor, I move that we defer RZ 15-08, Section 64-1811, to delete the equine garment fabrication use permit, Agenda Item Number 15-099, to the June 15th, 2015 meetings.
Second.
Okay, I have a motion from Councilmember Longoria, for deferral, and a second, Councilmember Thurmond. Any comments? Hearing none. All in favor, please say aye.
Aye.
Opposed? That passes unanimously. Sudi, if you'll call the next item?
Next item is consideration of RZ 15-09, Section 64-1, Definitions, to create a definition for equine garment fabrication, Agenda Item Number 15-100. First presentation was at the April 13th City Council meeting, and discussed at the April 20th City Council Work Session. Ms. Kathy Field. No public comment.
Okay, then I'll close the hearing, and open up for any questions or discussion or motion.
Mayor, I move that we approve RZ 15-09, Section 64-1, Definitions, to create a definition for equine garment fabrication, Agenda Item Number 15-100.
Second. Okay, I have a motion for approval from Councilmember Longoria, second from Councilmember Moore. Any discussion? Hearing none. All in favor, please say aye.
Aye.
Any opposed? That passes unanimous.
Longoria's not horsing around tonight.
Oh, that is so funny.
Couldn't let that one go by.
All right. Moving forward, Sudi, if you'll please call the next item on unfinished business.
The next item is consideration of ordinance to amend Appendix A parks and recreation fees and other charges, Chapter 34, Section 24 of the Milton City Code, Agenda Item Number 15-102. First presentation was at the April 13th regular city council meeting. Mr. Jim Craig.
Mayor, I move that, sorry, Jim, go ahead.
Now, you're just playing around.
Okay, Jim, go ahead.
I'd like to start by thanking Kathy for giving me a turn. Mayor and council, this is simply a modification to the existing Appendix A, which we established the fees that we use for rental facilities. As you know, we have, the Broadwell Pavilion is completed, it is an extremely desirable place, we have many applications from citizens who want to use it. We have established a fee of $100 for a four-hour rental, and we put refundable deposits on there to make sure that they properly take care of the facility. We're simply asking you to approve this fee structure. If you have any questions, please let me know.
All right, Karen and Matt?
My only question is, why is the deposit $500 for the Broadwell Pavilion, and only $50 for Bethwell Community Center?
The deposit for the Broadwell Pavilion of $500 came from a recognition that the, our city deductible on insurance is $1,000. And $1,000 seemed extreme, and as it is, all we're doing is we're holding credit card. As far as the Bethwell Community Center, that predates me, and I've never been asked to look at changing that.
I'm just wondering if that would be $500 for both, if it's just a deposit, we're not really charging it through, are we? I mean-
We could look at that. Some of our rationale in holding a larger deposit in newer facility, number one, is it's newer, number two, is there's a couple of opportunities to, it's got a fireplace, obviously, it's got a pad that we anticipate future grill use, it just, you know, there's potential risks that exist at it, that may not just regularly present themselves at Bethwell. We've got 1,000 square feet of cinder block construction at Bethwell Community Center, which is a little bit different than a half-million-dollar, big, bold timber pavilion that was just constructed. So, again, it just, holding it in the event that there's damage, that we would need to file some type of complaint against.
Okay, and how, also, with our alcohol ordinance in these facilities, how much additional would that be, or what process would somebody go, you know, have to go through, if they wanted to, I guess, serve alcohol, or function there?
I'll let Stacy answer, once you've worked on that.
There is an application process that you have to go through. You have to go through a background check, and you have to file an application for it, and there's a fee of $50 that you also have to pay.
We actually just went through that process with the birthday party that was there Friday. There's five criteria that I have to weigh, based upon the request and the event, and the person has to be of good character, to follow the code, which is what we determine to be in the background checks.
It's kind of like, how far interior is interior, right?
No, it defines what good character is, so it's very objective, and we don't have to make subjective guesses.
How'd that go?
How did the background check go, or the party?
The party, how did the first use?
I understand it went well. I drove by as they were forming up and putting balloons out, so I can follow back up, but I don't have any reason to believe it didn't go well.
Actually, I can confirm that the party went very well, there's no issues, no problems. It's turned off, and had a nice time.
All right, Burt?
How, Jim, does it work with specifically the Broadwell Pavilion, being open air, and people walking by, maybe having a picnic, versus the reserved time? How is that, how is that kind of publicized, or can it be publicized, so, say, a family doesn't come to have a picnic under it, and, you know, 30 minutes before, or 10 minutes before, somebody shows up for the blocked time?
Well, the person who has the permit, they've got their applications, they could show someone, hey, I've got this reserved.
But even to go away, maybe we could have some type of, you know, online message board, or something, you know, there that would say, hey, this thing's reserved from X to X, so, you know, somebody coming over from Crab Apple, say, walking over with a picnic lunch, doesn't commit with too much surprise.
I'd be happy to sit down with Kathy and Bobby Shami, and see if we can come up with something that'd be artistic. We don't want to take away, that's a beautiful facility, we don't want to take it just for a signboard, but there are probably ways we can do that.
I think that would maybe be beneficial, just to make it even more user-friendly.
Put some crime scene tape around it.
Exactly.
No, 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 Phil, I don't think that would be very aesthetic.
Matt?
Is that 50% non-Milton resident fee? Does that apply to Alfred's, or do they partake in that, in our partnership with Alfred on Parks and Recreation, non-resident fees? No, I'm just curious.
I believe I heard you ask if it's related to the, does Alfred have to pay a 50% fee? The answer is no. As we- As we, as we also have the right to rent facilities, Milton residents have rights to rent facilities in Alfreda at their resident fee, we offer the same to Alfreda.
Okay.
Okay. Anything else?
I'd like to make a motion, then, to approve Agenda item fifteen dash one zero two.
Second.
Okay, I have a motion, Councilmember Hewitt, second from Councilmember Coats. All in favor, please say aye.
Aye.
Any opposed? That's unanimous?
Thank you.
Thank you. All right, Sudi, if we could, please call the next item, which is number three on our agenda.
This is the third item under new business, consideration of a general release and settlement of claims between the City of Milton, Georgia, Milton, and Thomas and Judy Barts, Marsha Boston, Fiona Lodge, Lee Davis, and Shu Jen Davis, property owners pursuant to the city's payment of ten thousand dollars to the property owners in order to remediate an alleged runoff sedimentation issue at two thirty-five, two forty-five, two fifty-five, and two sixty-five Thompson Springs Drive, Milton, Georgia, and for Milton and all of its officers, agents, and employees to otherwise receive a complete and final release related to same. This is Agenda item number fifteen one one two, and Mr. Larry Ramsey?
Actually, Mayor and Council, I'm gonna try to take this one tonight for Larry until we maybe, unless we get stuck in some legalese in this settlement agreement. In order to understand what I'm, what we're asking you to do tonight, I want to give you a little bit of background into this particular case, and then explain to you what this release and final settlement claims does. This dates into last year. Councilman Lusk and I have been working with some property owners over adjacent to our Belt Memorial Park property. As we've seen late last year and early this year, we certainly have had our fair share of rain, and likely actually had substantial quantities of rain towards the end of last year. We don't believe, and I do firmly believe, that there was no negligence on the city's behalf and on the part of our contractor. But with the torrential storms that we received, something came out of one of our detention ponds and released downstream, and settled into a pond, a farm pond, that is between these four property owners' houses. It was an interesting discharge, because it, it never settled out, and the turbidity of the water was quite, quite high. We researched several fixes that we believed would remediate the problem. We were working with scientists and coming up with some type of a colloidal something or another that would bring these particles together and have them fall out of the water. And I'm probably using the wrong terms, Bill can correct me here in a second. And, you know, we had some disagreement amongst the property owners as to what the correct fix for the pond was. The owners, primarily led by Tom and Judy Barts, great folks, had their own solution crafted that they believed was a better solution than ours. We believed ours was sufficient, but at the end of the day, we worked with our city attorney's office and crafted, instead of a, instead of a fix solution, crafted a settlement of claims between the city and those neighbors in that, for, you know, in exchange for writing a check and receiving a full release, and from this particular incident, we'll, we'll write this check in the form of an agreed upon settlement agreement, and we'll walk away from it and allow them to fix it in the manner in which they think that it is appropriate to be fixed. They've got an aerator device, as well as some flock logs and some other, other fancy things. I probably don't know how they work, but the reality is, is that we were gonna spend some money in this event either way. We believe that this is a, a good place for Milton to end up with this particular situation, and that this is one that we can put behind us and move on as we complete the park project. Happy to answer any questions. City attorneys here are happy to answer any questions on the legality of the document, but that's, in essence, what it does. I think Bill's probably talked with many members of council on this topic as well, so...
And just to clarify, too, that's, the property owners are happy with this settlement, too.
Very, very, this is a...
It's a win-win.
If we agree to this tonight, they're very happy.
And if what they are proposing doesn't work, that's their problem. We paid the ten thousand dollars, and we're fully released of everything.
Correct, Chris.
I like it.
Okay, anybody else?
No, just to repeat, or do you want to repeat everything Chris said? I did meet with the Barts, and they quickly came up with this resolution, and felt that was, they were satisfied with it, and I think it's fair and equitable, and I would recommend that we approve it.
Okay, I'll open up for a motion.
Mr. Mayor, I'll move to approve a general release and settlement of claims between the City of Milton, Georgia, and Thomas and Judy Barts, Marsha Boston, Fiona Lodge, Lee Davis, and Shu Jen Davis, property owners pursuant to the city's payment of ten thousand dollars to the property owners in order to remediate an alleged runoff slash sedimentation issue at two three five, two four five, two five five, and two six five Thompson Springs Drive, Milton, Georgia, and for Milton and all of its officers, agents, and employees to otherwise receive a complete and final release related to the same. Agenda item number one five dash one one two.
Second.
Okay, I have a motion for approval, Councilmember Lusk, second. Councilmember Coats, all in favor, please say aye.
Aye.
Any opposed? That passes unanimously. Okay, we'll move on to reports. Anything on, kind of, we have some staff reports, but I want to see if there's anything in council that's not on the agenda, which report on that?
Yeah, the, we obviously heard from Kimberly, who is our new library director, and for those who are not on the Friends of the Milton Library Board, but are curious to know, our library is scheduled to open no later than June fifteenth, and possibly by May twenty-eighth was the original date. I don't think we're gonna hit that because of the rain. But they are on track, and, and we're scrambling to get all that done. So, just so everybody knows, that's when our library in Milton is gonna be open.
Okay. Anybody else? All right, Chris?
Mr. Mayor, I'd like to just leave with just a quick couple of updates for you tonight, and then turn it over to Councilmember Lusk for a discussion on the selection of the exteriors. We're gonna look at some exterior renderings of City Hall, and then we'll work through, fairly quickly, some, some staff reports in five different departments for you tonight. I do want to let you know that this morning, the nine-one-one Public Safety Radio System that we've been working on for some time with the Radio Authority, we had the official cut over this morning, and as we are sitting here tonight, everybody in the city, all the radios in the city of Milton, Alfreda, Roswell, and Sandy Springs are functioning on the new system, so successful cut over today. And I can tell you that if you want to take just a little bit of credit for making Milton safer tonight than it was yesterday, it is that, because there are places now in Milton that we didn't have radio coverage yesterday that we do today. So, a good project, well under budget. If you remember, we had about a sixteen million dollar project at this point. We were able to build the project in about fourteen million dollars, so on a percentage basis, it came in through some elimination of towers and other things. Under budget, on time, and all those good things we like to put with the project. So, that was successful today. You'll see that press release come out tomorrow. Reminding you quickly that the Jubilee is this weekend, at the Pavilion on Saturday. So, kind of the opening kickoff spring event there. And I want to let you know that there's all indications that we will move to closing on Providence Park this week. So, that's been a long time in the making, a long time coming, but it looks as though our documents are in order. So, I should be able to report to you before our next meeting that we, in fact, own Providence Park. So, three quick updates, but of some magnitude, and the one we moved to now that we published was a discussion on the selection of exterior of our future City Hall building. I will turn this over to Councilmember Lusk, as you know, we talked about having a council member kind of attached to us as we went through this exterior process. Bill's been great in taking trips downtown with us, and we think we've taken the two that you've seen in the lobby, or that you've already seen as option one and option two, and come up with a good, a good final option. Before I turn this over to Bill, I need to let you know the reason we're here with this tonight is because in order to stay on our timeline with our construction schedule, is we need to have this decision made in agreement upon this is the, this is the rendering, and we need to move into our next phase of design drawings on May the first. So, we're on time, but we need to, this is, this is a decision we need to try to get to tonight, if we can. Councilmember?
Thank you, Chris, and thank you for allowing me to collaborate in this whole process. Obviously, a lot of staff was involved in this, Kathy, and certainly Bob Busemi, and Carter, and, and Chris also. And last week, we went down to Cooper Carey's office and kind of made some of the final tweaks to the design. What we have here in front of us is, on the top of this presentation board, is the south elevation of City Hall. And we established our mission statement and vision statement eight years ago, and one of the key features or key points was to preserve the rural character of the city. And we proceeded with the design, the architect did, along with staff, to incorporate a lot of the historic features of, features of a lot of historic structures from around the area, not just Milton. And just to generally state where we are with the entire design, the rendering, the elevation at the top, the storyboard, the south elevation, there are actually four different structures that are represented there. In the, the extreme left structure, the one-story facility there is what I call DPW wing of City Hall. And below it, in that circle there, you can see a representation of a typical barn in the area. And I tried to pick some of the features of that characteristic-type barn and apply them to that single-story structure as a vertical, or what appears to be vertical board and baton siding on it, also metal roof. There are some other features of it that are not really evident right there, but it's the foundation of that structure, which would typically be a field stone or even a granite foundation. To the, the next structure to the right is the main administration building. And we drew from a lot of historic structures from around the area, but primarily from the old Milton County Courthouse, which is shown in the center. And the main features of it, of course, the most obvious feature is the brick. And the courthouse and the statum building, which is structured down there at five points in Crab Apple, has a characteristic Flemish coursing in the brickwork. And we're gonna try to incorporate that in, into that structure to the extent we can. Most of the elevations there, though, were pretty much eaten up with windows. The courthouse itself there, the old courthouse, has what are typically known as punched openings, and that's a single opening there allowing light into the building. Due to the size of this building and current design approaches towards taking in as much natural light as possible, we tried to maintain the punched opening appearance. It's gonna become more evident as design develops, that it will more closely represent what's called a punched opening-type fenestration in the building. The council chambers, the one-story structure to the, to the right of the admin building, more accurately picks up that punched opening-type look. Both of those structures, of course, have the metal roof, which is characteristic of buildings of that era, which is a hundred to a hundred and thirty years in the past. I believe the original Milton County Courthouse, and I think Carter pulled up a date on it, probably around eighteen seventy, somewhere in that era.
I think that's about right.
Beneath the roof line, you see what's called a freeze board, and it's a board that's right below the top of the brick and below the roof itself. And there are brackets spaced pretty regularly that appear to support the overhang of the roof and frame into those freeze boards. Another feature there that we picked up, and you can barely see it in the, it's right end of the elevation of the admin building, is a balcony, which was one of the predominant features of the old Milton County Courthouse. You can see it in the center on the second floor level. So, we're trying to pick up that feature just on one bay of the building, so to speak. The main entrance is going to be between the, the admin building and the council chambers. In that foyer or entryway, there will be kind of a meeting space, and hopefully a display space to display any type of item that you want, and hopefully incorporate some historic artifacts or photographs, prints of years gone by. To the extreme, well, the next section there, or the area between the third structure and the fourth structure is the courtyard, and that'll be a focal point looking out, looking in, in both directions, from north to south, and from east to west, or west to east. That courtyard will be visible from the main entryway, or the main foyer, to the admin building, and be visible straight through the council chambers out to the courtyard. It'll be kind of centered up, so you'll also see the fourth structure out there, which is a community building. It'll be a community meeting center without exterior restrooms, so it'll be able to be used just like the Bethwell House or Pavilion, open for public use, probably to conform with our fee schedule here, too. That structure there is represented by that, the circle below it, and it will incorporate more than likely lap siding. And we've picked up a little bit in that photograph there of a chimney along with that window that's depicted in that, that photograph. So, that'll, that whole structure will kind of reflect old farmhouses, old residences from the past century or century and a half. Below, in the lower right-hand corner, is an interior of a structure up on Dr. West's farm, which is on Birmingham Highway, and that's pretty much typical of interior of homes that were built a hundred years ago. And I'm sure most everybody's been in Milton's restaurant, and it's essentially the same type of interior finish that you'd get in the old farmhouses. Wide plank boards, no sheet rock. And that, that type of finish would not only be on the walls, but on the ceilings of the rooms, too, along with typical rough sawn, hard pine... too, along with typical rough sawn or hard pine oak or hard pine flooring. What else? On the windows themselves of the main building, the admin building, well, pretty much all the way around, they conform to modern, up-to-date energy codes, all insulated glass. But they would still have what's shown in that circle to the extreme right there. They'd be true divided lights, which are the panes in the windows. And what's shown there is what's called a six over nine. There's six panes on the upper sash and nine panes on the lower sash. So that'll further pick up the characteristic of windows from Europe, 100, 150 years ago. Typically trimmed out in white, and it's not very evident on this elevation here on the admin building or the other structures there. But I'd like to see that white coloration picked up on framing the windows, the freeze board, and the brackets up along the top of the brickwork. Personally, I think it fits in with what our idea of preserving rural character is. Another point, it is a two-story structure, and it's not totally dissimilar from Ronson Adams buildings along Crab Apple. It's not the same architecture, but it has the same mass, and I think it will complement what's out on Crab Apple Road without really competing with it. I think it's going to appear to be something that was originally set in that, in that property. And it'll certainly be a showcase structure, since our relocated road is going to pass right along that south elevation. So it's going to be a prominent structure. I think it's going to be one that we're going to be proud of. I think it's going to be well-used. And I think it's, it's going to fit in a lot more so. And I don't want to bash the city of Swanee, that we were over there to look at their facilities last week. But I don't think there's any question that this structure and this design fits in with the character of Crab Apple and all of Milton. It's going to define our city center down there. Carter, did you have anything to add to it? Kathy and Chris, we were all down there last week with Cooper Carey.
That captures it.
That captures it very well. Be happy to answer any questions. If you have anything to add, because that was a good description.
A lot is perfect. It's a good-looking facility.
Here's this, this slide here in the presentation board in front of us here shows all four elevations. And the top one is the south elevation. The second one there is the north elevation, and of course, the bottom one there. To the, to the left is, do I say that right? No.
Looking at it from the...
That's the north, that's the north in the lower left-hand corner. In the lower right-hand corner.
I like it.
It's looking at the...
Yeah, right.
Yeah, that's looking at east and west.
We're going to have this barn as kind of a catty corner.
Right. And do we have a slide of the site plan? Okay, to the extreme right, well, you can see the road that comes, the relocated road that comes in front of the building. To the extreme right is the DPW wing, the larger mass, there's admin building. You can see the connection there where the sidewalks come in, the main entryway, the connection between the admin building and the council chambers. And the courtyard out to the right of it, to the east of it, and then the community, community building to the extreme right.
How did Carter get his own wing? Get involved in the zone.
It's kind of become known as that, but it really is, there's more to it down there than just public works. And from a floor plan perspective, you can't really tell that it's us, that it's separated from the rest of the building.
It's good.
Build in your own place.
Well, just for...
The bus drivers eat free, right?
Just for the sake of distinction between the different elements there, I came up with a DPW wing. But typically, when you're either designing or building structures like this, usually field forces come up with their own monikers or labels for each part of it.
There is some brake space and some mechanical space and some community development down there, so we're sharing our wing. Sorry, the wing.
What we're looking for tonight is, I think that's the visuals that we have to show. What we're looking for tonight is to make sure that there's just not any objection from the council, because as we move through this process, there are certain points we have to close, we have to close a part of the process and move into the next one. That is where we are with respect to this. This is kind of schematic design, and now we move into design drawings, and our calendar hasn't doing that many firsts. So if there's no objection tonight, I don't need an official vote, just needed to bring it forward in a public meeting to keep the council informed. If there's no objection tonight, we will consider this to be the direction of the council to move towards a building that aesthetically has this look to it. Now, that's not to say as we get through design and building engineering and all that stuff that goes on with the project from where we are to actual opening, that there won't be some slight tweaks or modifications. Obviously, we'll keep those open and transparent, but, you know, we might be some of the stone out of it or some of the brick, or who knows where we end up. But substantially, this is where we are at this point with the site plan and the aesthetics and the structure itself.
Called a design intent, but as Chris said, is there anybody that has any objections to this? I think it looks, looks really good, but anybody have any problem moving forward anyways? You know, obviously, there'll be some...
Okay, just a quick question while the site plan is on. Is that, is that parking indicative of what reality would be?
It's pretty close. We've got about 54 spaces that we're anticipating getting on the site.
Well, it looks like it's broken up real well, where it doesn't look like a big mass.
Okay, good job.
Thank you, Bill.
Yeah. Bill and staff.
Happy to do it. Thank you.
Excellent. Mr. Mayor and the council, tonight, we're going to start with something that I emailed to you about a month ago. We were trying to break up the city's departments and bring you just very quick, timely, and up-to-the-minute updates as to what's going on in some of your city departments, just so that there's not, not concern or confusion as to what might be going on in a certain department. As I've explained to our staff, it's important that we give you good information, but it's also important that we're just standing at the microphone saying, what can we answer? Or what kind of questions do you have of us? I've tried to break them apart by some of the quicker updates that I think are going to happen, and tried to put those on the night when we have the zoning agenda, where with some of the larger updates on the night we don't, so that we don't stay extraordinarily late one night or the other. I've anticipated that really this is not intended to be much more than two or three minutes of a quick update and then answer any questions that you've had. I've got these amazing colored binders that you certainly won't lose. I'm not sure what color we're going to call this, but we'll stick with blue. And I've got one of these for each of you tonight, and what it does is it's a binder that if you have to bring something with you to the council meeting, we bring updates to you. We've got this set up by month that you can just kind of continue to accumulate over the course of the month, the updates that you receive every month. So at the end of the year, you should have this and be able to look back and go, gosh, that was, you know, I can kind of go back and see the history of the fire department over the course of a year and, and all of the, all the departments. So it's preloaded for you tonight, and in future nights when we bring updates, we'll just bring three-hole punched paper so that you can insert it in the right month and kind of keep a running, a running update of department updates. Having said that, I'll work getting myself out of the chair here and handing these out to you, and I anticipate, again, two to three minutes per person tonight, so bear with us for another 15 minutes or so. We'd like to just update you on some of the workings of these departments. We'll start with Chief Edgar.
Good evening, Mayor and Council. First, I'd like to thank you for your support with the radio system. It's very comforting to know that our public safety folks now have a reliable radio system, so thank you for that. The stats, the monthly stats, I believe you'll have a copy of coming out now, so I won't go through every one of those. These stats are from March. If you have any questions, I'd be certainly happy to answer those. But otherwise, I'd like to just go into some of the other items that we've been working through this past month. We have three structure fires in the month of March, and those were residential fires. One of them was a total loss, the other two were moderate damage. They are, we are working with the insurance companies on those with the investigation piece of those. And if you have any questions, please jump in, but I'll just keep going here. The MDA boot drive, we have two days left, and we've raised over $52,000 so far. So we're, we're well on our way to either reaching last year's goal or exceeding that.
What, what did you say that number was, Chief?
Just over 52,000. Our hydrant maintenance program, we started in March, will finish up at the end of this month. We have approximately 2,400 fire hydrants in the city. We've touched over 2,000 of those so far. We've done flow testing and residual and static pressure tests and painted those hydrants as well. So every fire crew is out there touching every hydrant. Our fire safety house, we were invited to the Georgia Public Safety Training Center last month. The City of Milton pub ed program has reached a level where we'd be recognized by the State Fire Marshal's Office. And we were asked to bring our public safety house down there, set up our program, and demonstrate it to all the fire marshals and other training executives from throughout the state. And it was a big hit. So it's proud for us to be able to show something to the state that we're doing here in Milton. So it was very, very cool. We are working on the specs for our new fire truck, for our new ladder truck. We have an apparatus committee that's putting that together, and at some point, we'll bring that to you all for approval. The Lucas automatic CPR device, it's an automated CPR device that actually hooks up to a patient. Instead of the person actually doing compressions, this device does it. It's battery-operated. We put it on our rescue truck, Rescue 42. Mid-March, two weeks later, we had our first field save with that device, which is pretty impressive. It does, if you've ever done CPR, it's very, you know, it'll fatigue you very quickly. This device is perfect CPR all the time. And we were able to get that patient on this CPR device immediately, transport that patient. That patient walked out of the hospital the other day after two weeks. It's pretty amazing stuff. Our first activation of the tornado sirens that occurred on April 20th, as far as I can say, that was a success. We notified the community, we were in the polygon, and it worked just the way it was supposed to work. Any questions? Be happy to answer. Yes, sir.
Would it be possible at some, some meeting in the future to get a demonstration of that Lucas?
Absolutely. Absolutely.
Hopefully, it'll just be a demonstration.
Are you going to volunteer?
I need to.
We'll bring a mannequin.
First volunteer for us.
The, yeah, tornado sirens were great, and Chris and I talked about this maybe for the rest of the council, too. Code Red did not, obviously, because the tornado came on as relatively quickly.
The tornado actually formed right on our borders. We were already, once we received notification that we were in a tornado watch, we started the process of Code Red, and which requires us to put a message together, send it in, get a code. By the time we had, ready to hit the button to hit send, the threat had already passed. So there was no reason to send that out to 11,000 subscribers, and when the threat wasn't there any longer. So the tornado sirens did exactly what they were supposed to do. It was an immediate threat. We sent them out, and it was an immediate notification. So...
Yep, that's, that's good. Hopefully, the sirens worked and scared the tornadoes out of Milton.
It did.
Well, and Chris and I had talked, too, is if the technology is updated at all, where maybe a faster phone call might work, too. Is there any way we can look at that?
Yes.
To go in addition with the tornado sirens, I think that'd be fine.
Yes, and actually, we're investigating, there's a component that's tied to the tornado sirens that can actually go out when that goes out. So we're looking at that as well.
That's great. As always, thank you. These are impressive stats, and that our police chief's here and listening to some of this. I don't know if you heard the $52,000, but I don't know if Chris has gone over the fundraising and all that each department does, but he's raising the bar there. Thank you, Chief. Okay, Chris?
We'll move on to finance.
Good evening, Mayor and Council. What I would like to report to you tonight, I won't worry about the stats, I mean, you can, you can read those, it's pretty easy to read. I would like to ask if there are any other stats that you would like to see coming out of finance, so you can think about that as I'm talking about some of the things I wanted to show you tonight. So one of the things I want to talk about is OpenGov. It is a transparency financial model reporting tool that we're going to put on our website when it rolls out, hopefully, beginning of May. And this is something that you can go in and play with and answer some of the questions that you want to answer about finance and where the money is coming from, where the money is being spent. It can drill down, it's depth by choice is kind of what I want to talk about tonight. So you can actually drill down into each department and see where the expenditures are, you know, type of expenditure, salaries, benefits, supplies, so on and so forth. There's other tools that you can use with this. We can set up frequently asked questions, like where's my money coming from, where's the money coming from, where's my money going? And you can change the look of the report, so if you don't like the graph that's showing now, you can go into a pie graph or a line graph. There's several different tools that you can use there. There's, right now, it's loaded with all of our financial data from previous years, I think from 2009 till current. Even for 2015, there's a different report that you can look at for current year, and it shows per month what that, what that looks like for the city of Milton. So this is a tool that is starting to be used. You can see a couple of different governments around Georgia starting to use this tool. Alpharetta is using it right now, as well as Dunwoody. And you can see this all over California. This is kind of a new thing that we're looking at. There's a lot of different things that you can do with this tool. You can tell a story with the tool. You can talk about why there's differences, why you're seeing a big jump in FY15 versus FY14 in revenues, in expenditures. And we can talk about local option sales tax and why that's, you know, how that affected our budget. So just something that I look forward to, and as we push this out, we'll talk about it a little bit more, and if you have any suggestions on, if you want to see anything different or any, any kind of questions about how to work the system, we'll, we'll get those answered for you. Another thing I want to talk about is the audit. We went through the audit. We have a clean opinion issued by the auditors. He will come in, hopefully, in May to present the audit report to you. There were two findings, very minor findings that, you know, we recognize that were important, and we will correct in the future. And the CAFRA is out on the website, so I encourage you, if you need some late-night reading, take a look at it. We are very proud of it, and we're also, we also submitted it again for another financial reporting award from GFOA. Be happy to answer any questions if you have any.
Any questions for Stacey?
This web-based tool is going to be really, 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 it, it's going to be transparency to any law-... There's not anything in our budget that you won't be able to, everything that you're seeing on here is stuff that anybody can get to. It's really, really neat.
We can even put all of the checks that we write out there, and it shows you who the checks are written to and how much, all of that.
So we can see all the trends. So we can see all the trends we want to see.
See all the trends you want to see.
You can bury yourself in every trend you could imagine.
Okay, anybody else? Thank you very much, Stacy. Appreciate that. Okay?
Okay, next, uh, kind of have IT and innovation engagement, Jason. So Jason and Dave kind of together, so take it away, Dave.
All right, well, uh, Mayor and Council, I'm coming for you, and, uh, well, the last time I, what's that?
You put on a tie.
I did put on a tie. First time since the last time. Overcoming my fear of ties.
Make sure it doesn't, make sure it doesn't clip, Dave.
Yeah, that's real. Okay, so, um, I want to give you an update. The last time I spoke before you, we talked about, uh, setting up a cloud vendor to implement a, a cloud solution for the city, uh, and as of the end of November, that was put into practice. They began, VC3 began interim support and started taking tickets immediately, and since then, they have been getting close to, on average, 100 tickets a month, which is pretty good stats. It's right in the target area. Normally, they expect two, three tickets a day. Right now, we're doing, if you just count the, the work week, we're doing about three or four tickets a day. So doing pretty well there. We have not fully gone to the cloud yet. We're still in what's called interim support, where they have monitoring tools installed on our network in place as they continue to install the infrastructure between us and their data center. Currently, the completion date is scheduled for May 21st for the fiber circuit. After that, they will begin to engineer a solution that migrates a lot of our infrastructure here to their data center and provide us better support there. I can answer any questions you have.
Okay, Joe?
What'd he say, Joe?
Well, yeah, but he's got...
The stats on like Facebook and Twitter, are those what we're sending out? Are those what people are liking us?
These, these are internal matrix stats for VC3, for the help desk queue, which I can follow. I don't interface with Facebook or anything like that, it's more Jason's.
Jason will be able to second to talk about it.
Okay.
Okay. You have? Thanks, Dave.
I guess I'll give the rest of my time to Jason, I think he's challenging today.
Remaining 10 minutes.
Give a balance of my time.
Yeah.
Okay, thank you very much for your time. Sorry about my voice, it's kind of shredded, I got sick last week, so. I just wanted to talk with you about some of the things we're doing in innovation and engagement. As you can see those stats, to answer your question, those are our raw likes, followers, things like that. Facebook page reach is somewhere in the 10,000 range a week right now. Our Twitter analytics are not as, quite as easy to follow, but we're using a different tool now. We use HootSuite to push everything out, schedule stuff and everything like that. Um, you'll notice too that we have Instagram on there. Thanks to the, uh, just brilliant and very hard work of Angela and Courtney, we have really been able to expand what we're able to do on social media as far as the type of Facebook engagements that we're having, Instagram. I wanted to thank Councilmember Thurman personally for those, the T-shirt idea, because that has, from Earth Day, having that has basically meant that we now can have an Instagram account that's constantly pushing out local kids, talking about what they love about Milton with our own hashtag for the love of Milton. So it's been a real boom. Um, let's see, I also wanted to tell you about the website. I received the beta link early last week, so I have been going back and forth with them, working on it right now. To answer all your questions that you asked at the volunteer lunch, uh, yes, they will handle every bit of that as far as making sure the certificates are all right and everything like that. I gave them our, uh, our login to our GoDaddy account to make sure that all that stuff works. I think you guys are gonna really like the site. One of the really neat things about it that I like, it's incredibly easy to use. You really don't go have, you really don't have to go anywhere past the front page, because it's got a user dashboard built right into the front page that lets you sort by event, news, projects, statistics. I'm gonna, I asked that we changed it to analytics, but, um, just to, you know, make it sound a little bit nicer. But so basically, you'll be able to, on the front page, you'll be able to see all news items, all project items, all analytics, everything is right there. The community will be able to pull, uh, post their own things on the calendar, and, um, we will also have, in addition to the financial transparency tool that Stacy showed you, the ICMA tool, we're working on that as well for our internal statistics, and so I'll be able to, I, I've already, um, put in the analytics that I had shown you in the dashboard that I had created, um, and we will be able to, to integrate that into the site as it launches. So we're gonna have a whole new level of transparency immediately when this site launches. We're hoping May 7th. Yes?
What are you doing?
No, go, go ahead. That's, that's pretty much the long story.
I'm, I'm looking at this, it says website new visitors, and you're given a percentage. Is that a percentage of the website total users? So we could say that of the 10,928 users who visited in March, 55% of them were brand-new first-time visitors?
That is correct.
That's amazing.
I know, right? And I wouldn't believe it either, but that's, that's the way it is in Google Analytics every single month.
Well, it's interesting that the, the month-to-month total users didn't really change much, and the new visitors stayed the same, which means that we're not getting people to revisit.
Most people, when they come, and this is the reason that we put, we front-loaded so much of it on the front page, most people come one time to check a, a question. Now, what we've tried to do is through social engagement and using a spoke method, push them to the site so that they can interact with it a whole lot more, and I think what you'll see is, as we can launch online permitting, uh, online credit card payments and stuff like that for more than just taxes, I think that you'll see that, that number decrease substantially, and you'll have a lot of returning users. But yeah, right now, we have a ton of first-time users, and a lot of it is people who use the site for business.
Okay.
Yes, sir.
And then probably in that first, that first page is, are you gonna have a area if someone wants to sign up to get the, to get the push messages?
Oh, yeah, we've got, we've got social buttons and, and I want to, yeah, it's, it's, well, and the great part about it too is it's all responsive, so it doesn't really matter what you're on, it's all gonna look the same no matter what. So, yeah, that's a huge part. And we're actually changing providers. We're gonna move from constant contact to a company based here in Atlanta called MailChimp, because they offer a, I know it's a ridiculous website name, but they offer a, um, they're really forward-thinking people. I know a guy that works in their design lab there, and he's a, pretty much a genius, and, um, so what we're gonna be able to do is integrate that user dashboard into every email we send. So essentially, all of our emails, we're doing it some now with the, with the buttons and the widgets, but every email that we send is essentially just gonna be a mini website that carries our branding and carries every answer to everything anybody's gonna want.
So you've got hot links so someone can click on it and it takes you right back to the site?
It's, yeah, it's, it, it looks just like site and everything, yeah.
Any else, any questions? I gotta say, thanks, Jason, you know, if you look at most other city and municipal websites, ours is already way above, but I, I got a peek at this, and I was impressed at not only how, how easy it seemed to work, but all the information and, and all that. I think you guys are gonna really like it, so.
Thank you very much. Yeah, I hope to have a pretty good version of it I can bring you before we launch. Thank you.
Okay.
While we bring up Sam for the last one, I'll tell you that if you're going to Savannah this year for the GMA, you gotta watch out for Jason now, because GMA invited him down as their representative to be kind of their guy on the street, doing their communications and their social media, um, stuff for, for the conference in Savannah. So if you see Jason down at GMA, you know, he's not, he's, he's there to do stuff, so just... Sounds like a consulting fee for the city of Milton. Watch for, uh, exactly, exactly. Watch for Jason.
Publicity for us.
Down there this year. And, uh, Sam.
Thanks. Save the most exciting stuff for last. HR stats.
If it wasn't after nine. HR stats. Worried about that.
Um, really, it's looking to sort of my dashboard, what I look at, try to keep up with in HR, and I won't go through all the stats, um, but sort of hit some of the highlights. Our average employee's been with us for a little over five years. So far this year, we haven't had any turnover, no one's left. Since this report was generated, we have had two resignations. So that kind of keeps probably in line with, we're rejecting our turnover at about 4.4% or, I'm kind of an optimistic person, I like to refer to it as stability rate instead of turnover. So I think we'll keep about 95.6% of our employees during the course of the year. We have 137 authorized budgeted full-time positions, 135 of them are filled, which is really good to keep that high level filled. Our average salary is about $57,000 per employee. One of the more interesting stats, and I come out of a benefits background, so I like to keep track of this stuff, is sort of what's going on with our healthcare, and we try to keep up with that and sort of see where that's going. As of the last report we got, we have paid premiums of about $1.2 million, and our total claims are just over $1.1 million that goes against that. So we're having a loss ratio of about 89%. We'd like to see that somewhere around 85%, that'll keep our renewal kind of consistent, so we're a little bit over. But you can see in the next couple of things what our driver really is with that, and that is our large losses. We've had five employees or their dependents who have had claims of over $25,000. Those five employees have accounted for $403,000 worth of claims, or about 36% of our total claims that the plan realizes. So that's our driver. Those cases are being actively managed by Blue Cross Blue Shield to try to keep some of those costs down, but that, um, sort of shows, it's sort of, I refer to it as the 80/20 wheel on steroids with those large losses there. We're pretty good on vehicle accidents and safety last month, and at the bottom, you can see some demographics about our workforce. I won't go over all of those, and there's the numbers. Are there any questions about HR or anything else you'd like to see or be interested in tracking?
Buddy?
You can certainly think about that, you can back to us if there's, if you all just let me go, "Gosh, I really would like to see, uh, ratio."
And they don't think, you don't think they think about these questions all the time, Chris? We're seeing more out of the jar.
All the time, regularly.
Hits me up at night. Okay.
Thank you.
Thank you, Sam.
Appreciate it.
And I just want to also, though, I thank, uh, thank you to all of our staff that is here tonight and stayed and made presentations or just being here. Appreciate you taking your, staying here this late and sharing that, this information with us. Okay, Chris, anything?
None other than I'll turn it over to Larry if he wants to get on record and say something.
Well, yeah, I would feel left out to make the trip down here to see you all, so how about I just announce that there are no litigation matters for executive session?
Good.
We like to pay our attorneys so they don't have to speak.
Joe? Just one, one last thing. I just wanted to comment, I thought the staff did a great job, Angela and Courtney, and Jason was there too for Earth Day. I thought it was a great event, despite the rain that we had the night before. We had good council participation, but I think it was a, a great event. I saw a lot of people that really enjoyed and, and enjoying when we see the pictures coming out, the regular pictures showing us. I thought it was a good event.
Moses was very excited to participate.
And I thought Rick was a great...
Rick did a good job of him.
No, that's not what I was looking for.
You were the best emcee there.
Yeah.
Thank you for doing that.
But it was good.
Okay.
Mayor, we don't have anything else.
And that's a clue, conclude this meeting. Do I have a motion to adjourn?
Motion to adjourn.
I have a second. I have a motion and a second to adjourn. All in favor, please say aye.
Aye.
Any opposed?